Okay, it's now six P M. So I call the Tuesday, April ninth, City Commission Work Session to order. Can we please call the roll?
Mayor Butler.
Here.
Commissioner Adam Jack.
Here.
Commissioner McCollough.
Yes.
Commissioner Opel.
Here.
Commissioner Motta.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now before we begin the work session items, the commission needs to determine if they want to allow public comment for this work session. Doesn't look like it, so okay. If there's no motion for that, then we will move on to the first item on the work session agenda, which is Visit Manhattan.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Marcia Rozell, Director of Visit Manhattan. It has been a bit of a slow January, but a fast after that first quarter. And I'm here tonight to share some highlights. At Visit Manhattan, which is a department of the Manhattan Chamber of Commerce, we focus on bringing more visitors to town, whether for conferences, sporting events, business or leisure travel. We know that when people travel in, they spend dollars that make a difference here in Manhattan. As per our contract with the city, we have a steering committee to advise me on the use of the transient guest tax, or also known as TGT funds. This year, Scott Seaborn, who's the owner of Mr. K's, Rockin' K's and Kites, is our chairman. Members represent the Manhattan hospitality industry, including owners, directors, G M's of attractions, hotels, restaurants, and other local businesses. We also have members that represent K-State, both in the hospitality department and athletics. This committee will meet six times this year. We have lively discussions about our budget, about how and where TGT funds are to be spent to accomplish the mission of bringing more visitors to town. This committee does provide me with great advice and opinions in which I am very grateful Thinking about tourism, it's important to know the economic impact that tourism has here in Manhattan. Driven by pent-up demand and price increases of key commodities, visitor spending in Manhattan increased eleven percent to top two hundred and fourteen point three million dollars in 2022. And just a side note, we won't receive data for 2023 until later this year. The two hundred and fourteen point three million dollars that visitors spent in Manhattan sustained two thousand six hundred and fifty-four jobs and generated twenty-three point one million in state and local tax revenues. These tax dollars break down into the five categories you see there: food and beverage, transportation, retail, lodging, recreation and entertainment. As the DMO, your destination marketing organization for Manhattan, we focus our efforts on these categories. We work hard to promote where to eat, how to get there, what to buy, how great our beds are, and how much there is to see and do for our visitors. And then we, as locals, we benefit from the quality of life, plus the economic impact tourism brings. Smith Travel Research provides us with the best data on how our thirteen hotel properties are performing. Data is received from the Star Report, lags behind one month, so I can't show you the whole first quarter here. Monthly occupancy for February was at fifty-six percent. And our monthly occupancy trends mirrored what the state and nation experienced in this first quarter, that the occupancy was down slightly. And I know for us, it could be due to those extreme cold days that we had in January. For year-to-date occupancy, we were at forty-seven point eight percent for February. And ideally, we'd like to be at sixty percent or above year-round. Again, nationwide occupancy was down these first few months, and experts have attributed that, the reduction in travel, it's just general concern for our economy, especially during an election year. Year-to-date revenue starts to differentiate after this first quarter. Currently, our average daily rate for a hotel room here is a hundred and ten dollars. This is up five dollars per room over 2023. Revenue of three point nine million results in just under three hundred thousand in TGT funds collected, as we are at a seven point five percent rate here in Manhattan. And we've had that seven point five rate since July first of 2019. Air DNA is a report for short-term rentals. You can see that in 2024, we're at forty-two percent year-to-date occupancy through February. Airbnb, V R B O, vacation rental by owner, and other short-term rentals have certainly increased in our market in the last fifteen years, with that supply of just over five thousand, which is bedrooms per the market. We had two hundred and fifty-four listings in Manhattan, and these listings include the entire place, a private bedroom or a shared space. And for us, the majority of our market is the entire home with one to four bedrooms. I've had somebody in this particular industry share with me, they feel that two hundred and fifty-four available listings is a bit of an underestimate of what we might truly have, but this is the amount that's registered. And then gratefully, we collect TGT on these short-term rentals since 2017. The staff of Visit Manhattan has been working hard this first quarter, booking meetings and sporting events for the future. I want to acknowledge my team, Jen Alley with Conventions and Lauren Chard with Sports. These two ladies focus on their respective markets, professionally working with planners to make conferences and events the best they can be here in Manhattan. We come alongside planners to provide complimentary services. These include such as bids to our hotel properties, which would be pricing and availability of hotel rooms and meeting space. We work hard to promote all of Manhattan, so that planners know how great their event can be here in Manhattan. And Lauren and Jen have, are above pace with the eighty-seven bookings in this first quarter, and I have no doubt that they will exceed the two hundred and seven from all of last In these next few slides, I just wanted to show you the breakdown between meetings and sports. Jen is doing a stellar job with working with meeting planners. Her attention to detail and follow-up is outstanding. This quarter, we hosted thirty-eight conferences with over four thousand attendees. And then Jen has booked fifty-nine conferences for the future in this first quarter. These meetings might be held as soon as the spring, while the majority are booked years out. And the best situation is when conferences book multiple years in the future. The most notable events that were recently held include the Kansas Association of Realtors Winter Advocacy Conference in January, they are hoping to return in 2025. Women Managing the Farm held its twentieth annual conference here in Manhattan. And then the return of K I AAA, which is the Kansas Interscholastic Athletic Administrators' Association, they returned for their fifty-fourth event. And this is the first time since the mid-two thousands that they've actually held their event here in Manhattan, and they have already booked for twenty-five and twenty-six. For future bookings, Jen's worked with Kansas State to secure the Big Twelve Conference Business Officers and Enrollment Services for the fall, also securing the Kansas Association of Fire Chiefs for a second consecutive year here in Manhattan, and they'll return in the fall. She's assisted with booking more than three years of Kansas P E O, which will bring the group back through 2028, a total of six years. And then securing the Kansas State Council of Society of Human Resource Management, or Kansas SHRM, and they'll be back in 2026. These photos are from the Kansas Natural Resource Conferences during their poster presentation, Women Managing the Farm, and then that bottom one there is a wheat sustainability workshop shop, where you see they utilize the wall really well. For sporting events, in the first quarter, we've hosted fourteen events with over a thousand participants. Lauren is doing an outstanding job getting all of our sporting events into our database system. She's great at meeting the needs of the sports planners as they host their events in town. New for 2024, she's adding all and any of the K-State home events. While we will be conservative in the number of attendees, we all know that there's an impact with home tournaments for Kansas State Athletics here for us. If you consider that our sports events happen mostly on the weekends, this is fourteen events in the thirteen weekends of the first quarter. Lauren has booked twenty-eight sporting events for the future, and almost all of these sporting events tend to be held in the year that she books them, and she's done a great job.
Marcia, can I, can I just ask a question?
Absolutely.
The attendees?
Mm-hmm.
For sporting events, is that?
Participation numbers.
So teams?
Teams, coaches. Sometimes we include fans if we know that it's a specific population, but most of the time, it's not spectator fans.
Thanks.
And you said that does include K-State home games?
This now does, but it would just count the visiting teams. It wouldn't count the spectators in Brambridge.
Okay. But you don't have that for the previous years?
Right.
Okay.
Right. Previous years, we, for many reasons, we did not count home games, and it's something that I've changed and decided to move forward with. Highlights include the fifty-third annual Little Apple Classic Wrestling. And while most of the participants, which were seven hundred athletes, coaches, and fans, are here, just, they don't spend the night, but they're here for the entire day. Kansas State Athletics Track and Field held an indoor track meet in their new remodeled facility that's next to the outdoor track of the RV Christian Outdoor Track Complex. Heart of America Volleyball Border Series, this was their third year to hold a multi-day tournament, which was both at Anthony and Eisenhower Recreation Centers. Kansas Special Olympics Cheerleading and Basketball, this was for the eastern section, which also included a lot of the Wichita teams, because they preferred to come here versus the following weekend, when the western section was in Hayes. We hosted those seven hundred and fifty athletes, coaches, and fans for that second year, also at the two recreation centers of Anthony and Eisenhower. N C A A Women's Basketball Rounds One and Two, this was great exposure for Manhattan during these televised games. K-State Athletics did an outstanding job as host, and I appreciated all that Lauren did to make sure our hotels were ready for the visiting teams they housed. These pictures include the March Madness excitement that happened all around town. There's a picture there of Lauren, she was at the Omaha International Boat and Sports Show, which happens in February. And then the Kansas Special Olympics, this is at one of the two recreation centers, and I believe it's Anthony, because you can always see the purple versus the green on the wall. We partnered again with the metal communities, which include Manhattan, Emporia, Topeka, and Lawrence, to provide the Prairie Pour Tour. This is a friendly competition that draws out-of-towners that are going to the different wineries and breweries and distilleries. And as the, at the end of March, we already had five hundred and sixty-four sign-ups from seven states, which included all around Kansas and Florida. And we've already had fifty check-ins here, excuse me, at our participating locations, which is the Tallgrass Tap House, the Manhattan Brewing Company, the Aggieville Brewing Company, and Liquid Art Winery. So, and by the way, this is an app that you can download and check in, and it's encouraged visiting of the nineteen of these establishments across the four communities. On Friday, we launched our new marketing campaign, Find Your Man-Happiness. You'll begin to see this phrase in our digital print and billboard ads. And actually, our first billboard went up already, it went up yesterday. If you're traveling, it's to the east of us, but if you're traveling west, you'll see it before exit three thirteen. The colors are bright, the theme is engaging and versatile, and we welcome all visitors to find their man-happiness in Little Little Apple. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have one. Transient guest tax, how much of that goes to the state versus staying here?
So the state collects and keeps two percent off the top.
Okay.
And then the rest comes to the city. And then we have, the last year, asked for one point three eight million. And, and we'll ask again in June for the, the contract to be signed in December.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
So is it still at six percent?
So transient guest tax is at seven point five percent collection if you stay here in Manhattan, and that was a change that was made in 2019. And I would say that is a little bit middle of the road compared to the other, uh, uh, collection areas in the state of Kansas for hotel occupancy, so for that guest tax.
For the A D R, for the short-term rentals? Is that, that's average daily rate?
It is.
Is that per room?
Yes, yes. So that gives you an idea of the rate that is being charged for that room. And then on that same graph, the revenue per room, the rev par, is the amount that the owner would make based on that revenue, or based on the A D R of the hundred and sixty-one dollars. For, for instance, on that graph, the revenue per room is sixty-seven dollars per room.
Okay, thank you.
So talk me through the, the V R B Os and those things. How do we know who's out there doing that? And do we know?
So if they're on, if they're registered on Airbnb? And V R B O? I always switch those two, but.
I know.
Those are ones that are mandated, that they have to be registered, and they collect transient guest tax for anybody that has stayed, and that's a change since 2017.
Okay.
Again, as I mentioned, I've had somebody in the industry say, not all of them are registered, so we don't know that all of them are out there, and that is probably, there's probably more out there that have not been or not regulated.
I think that's something that's becoming a bit of an issue, in that sometimes they're in neighborhoods, you know, they're basically just people who live in their homes, and so when they have a rental in the middle of the block that has big parties on weekends, and so I think it's probably something that's going to come down the pike, and we'll have to make some decisions on. How many, do we know how many houses?
That is, the two hundred and fifty-four, I, I don't. I probably could dig into the data and figure out, because that's based on bedrooms, which again, it's either the entire property, which maybe has one to four bedrooms.
Sure.
Actually, up till seven or eight bedrooms, depending on what the property is, or whether it's a, like, you could, if you have an extra bedroom in your house, you could have that on Airbnb or V R O to rent out, or a shared space, which is again, that term for the younger generation of couch surfing.
Uh-huh.
And so that's a shared space, it's not considered a bedroom.
Sure.
So those are all out there. And I will tell you, Commissioner, that there's a lot of people that, you know, you can think about, we have six home football games this year, right? And there are some people that probably will allow their house to be rented out, certainly as the World Cup possibly comes as far.
It's coming.
It is, it is coming, it is definitely coming. There are people that are considering, you know, renting out their homes on this platform to, you know, collect, collect the fee and pay their mortgage.
I, I'm, I'm not negative about them, but I'm just thinking, this is probably going to be something that we have to, sort of, look into more seriously as these sort of multiply. And I do know some young people who have a six-bedroom house, and they rent theirs and go someplace fun for the weekend, but of course, that doesn't fit with our, how many people are supposed to be living in, you know, that kind of thing.
Right.
I mean, I know it's a short-term rental, but still. So I just, I just think the more information you can get us on that, the better we will be prepared to, to answer questions, and I see that coming.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda.
The street maintenance.
That everybody I'm sure is looking forward to, is a review of street maintenance pavement condition ranges, funding and safe routes to school updates.
I can feel the excitement.
Probably also the number of potholes, huh?
I don't know if we can count that high, Gammie. Well, good, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Brian Johnson, City Engineer. Tonight's item is year seven of the street maintenance and safe routes to school updates. And while I have this opportunity with you, I also want to give you some summer construction updates as well. And we have four main items to discuss tonight. We're going to review the remaining street maintenance items from 2023. We're going to review some road closure impacts for the summer, because we are going to have some orange barrels out. We're going to review year seven of the state street maintenance financials, and then we're also going to review year seven of the safe routes to school funding. So the first item from 2023, some leftover stuff that we're still working on, is some Grandview Street Maintenance. That project was bid last fall, quite a bit of work being done in that area, about a million dollars, and they're about eighty-five to ninety percent done, so that one's getting close to completion.
Grandview Terrace is still half, fifty percent done, and it, you can't even park on that.
Yeah. The entirety of the project is about ninety percent done. There's some areas that we're gonna still have yet to get to. There's also some areas that we have taken out of this project, because with the Water Systems Master Plan, we're actually going to run a large diameter water main from the Sunset Tower over to the Seco Tower, and one of those potential routes is Oak Street. So we're gonna wait to do Oak Street until we are for sure, we're not going to be doing some utility work in there. That was originally bid with this project, but we're gonna hold off on it. So the other item is Casement Road from Allen to Brookmont, this is a mill and overlay, it was bid last year. Schilling got busy and didn't get to this project last fall. It sounds like they're going to be starting it this month. We heard from them last Friday that they want to get started here within the next couple of weeks, so we're going to get some public information out on that. Obviously, with the schools there, there's a lot of traffic control, a lot of things we're working through with them as far as phasing and planning, but probably before the end of April, we're going to see some work being done on Casement. Then for 2024 impacts for the summer, obviously, the purple here on Kimball, Dennison is north-south, the purple is closed, the route down Kimball and down Dennison is open. But this summer, this pinkish reddish area will also close, so the purple and the purple and then the pink will be closed, starting after commencement, so May fifteenth through August fifteenth. Then in August fifteenth, we anticipate having Kimball open, all of the purple, and then this red here on Kimball, so Kimball will be able to go east-west, and you'll be able to go north on Dennison, but you won't be able to go south on Dennison. That piece will close between the north in Baff driveway and Kimball. So that's Kimball for the summer. Then also, we're going to have some mill and overlay on Anderson between roughly Sunset and Eleventh Street. That's a five-lane section, so quite a bit of mill and overlay to happen there. We anticipate that probably sometime in July. That project's going to go to bid here yet in May, so we'll have a contractor in July. Inch and a half mill and overlay, new pavement markings, crossings, all of those things is included in that project. That goes all the way to Eleventh, so it'll go through Aggieville, get the turn lanes there at Twelfth Street. And then also, we're going to do some mill and overlay on Dennison between Anderson and Claflin, so that piece there in front of Kansas State University, Claflin to Anderson that's in really poor condition. Then this project, we just bid it here within the last couple of weeks, Hudson Avenue from Dickens to Claflin, that's the piece that's in front of Amanda Arnold School. And we're doing it in the summer, obviously, to reduce impacts to three eighty-three. Three eighty-three is also doing quite a bit of work at Amanda Arnold this summer, too, so we're going to have two contractors very close to each other, working together, so that project happens this summer. Just for your information, Hudson Avenue actually will get rebuilt all the way from Anderson to Kimball eventually. This is phase one of a three-phase project. Twenty-five, we'll do another phase, twenty-six, we'll do another phase. Then also, Four Winds, this project bid last in January, quite a bit of road construction going on out there, that subdivision's in pretty poor condition, so we're doing a complete rebuild in Four Winds this summer. Fremont Street, obviously still under construction, will be under construction through the summer into the fall. Right now, Twelfth Street to Eleventh Street is open, so you can access that. Traffic signal is operational, so pedestrians can get across and get into the park. And then Houston Street, Third to Fifth, that will be completed yet this fall. The green area right now is what's under construction, green and, and orange or reddish. Then we go to the blue, and then we go to the purple, so we work our way east to west. The green area is getting quite a bit of utility work also, so that's taking a little bit longer than what we'd like to take. Obviously, when you do large diameter storm sewer, it takes a while to get that put in the ground. Then West Anderson, from Reeth to Seth Child. So this will bid this fall yet. We anticipate some construction starting probably in September. I don't want to be working on Anderson while I have Kimball closed, so that's why this project is going to happen later this fall. I don't want to impact both of our east-west arterials at the same time. But this project is going to be a complete remove and replace, full-depth asphalt. We'll do two lanes at a time, so it will be open to traffic, but turning left out of those businesses will not be possible, so it'll be right-in, right-out. So just quick, what our street maintenance crews, our in-house crews did last year, they repaired about eighty-three hundred square yards of concrete, roughly in eighty-five, or eight hundred fifty thousand dollars in value. They also laid two hundred and fifty-six tons of asphalt, about a three hundred thousand dollar value. Four hundred and fifty-seven crew hours of sealing, crack sealing in the fall. And then we also had some lost productivity, because we were, we averaged about two to three people short in our street department last year. Sometimes we had four or five, sometimes we had one or two. Last fall, we were actually at full staff for a little while, and then we lost some more this spring again. But on average, we lost about a half a crew. We have three crews that do street work, so three crews of four, so when you start talking about two people short, you're talking two out of twelve, or, you know, about one-six, about twenty percent of your workforce. So it's a significant deal when we lose one or two people, not only for productivity, because we only have twelve, but also because then you have to retrain those new people, and that training takes some time, and you lose productivity then also. So for 2024, what we're planning on working on is Casement and Hayes, so Hayes, I'm sorry, Casement west of Hayes, as you go towards T C B. We do have a grant, a safety grant in for the intersection of Casement and Hayes, I think we're going to get. We got some positive news from KDOT about a week ago, so we don't want to do a lot of work in that intersection, because we're going to be in that intersection within the next couple of years with the safety grant. So we'll work from that intersection to the west towards T C B. We're also going to do some repair work at Kimball and T C B on that west leg, some very poor pavement condition in there. And while we have Kimball closed, and we're significantly reducing our traffic count on Kimball, we're going to go work down at T C B also. Increased safety, obviously with less cars going that way, so we're going to attack that a little bit this summer. And then also, Reeth and Dickens, that intersection, they're by Seco Park, that intersection's in really horrible condition. We've been trying to wait until the Seco project was done, and we just can't wait any longer. It needs to go be fixed, so we're going to go fix it this summer. Streets that are planned for asphalt work this year, Browning and Claflin, Sarber and Hayes, and then also Blument. We wanted to do a full mill and overlay on Blument this year, but we just don't have the funds to do it, so our street department's going to do some spot repairs and try to get us one more year. That's probably eight to nine hundred thousand dollar add to do that, and we just don't think we have the funds this year to do it. So we're gonna patch it up this year, and then maybe next year, we can get on Blument. Again, we've lost some people in the street department. We've averaged about four point five F T Es per month shortages, and that is one full crew, so we're down to really realistically two crews instead of three. We also have two inspectors in the engineering department remission, and three engineering positions also. So year save, or our seventh year of maintenance updates, our P C I condition, again, rated one to a hundred. We did our last full city scan in 2020, where we drove every single street in the city with a consultant that does pavement management. In 2022, we drove just the arterials and collectors. We plan on driving all the streets again in 2025. So from that 2020 data, you can build a model that looks out into the out-years. We check it in 2022 with the arterials and collectors, and then we'll check that model again in 2025. So again, our P C I values rated from zero to a hundred. So again, our PCI values rated from zero to a hundred, obviously eighty-five to a hundred is good and then satisfactory. Our goal has been to be at seventy, and you'll see shortly, uh we're actually meeting that goal, and we're very happy for that. Uh but there are some, there are some storm clouds on the horizon we wanna talk about also a little bit. So just to give you an idea, this would be a good PCI, uh Marlat Avenue and Anderson Avenue uh by Annabur Park. So those would be a good, they would be in the nineties. This would be a satisfactory, so Dickens west of College and Miller Parkway. This would be a fair, so this is uh Anderson Avenue by Sunset, and then uh Hayes Drive just north of McCall. Those would be a fair condition. And then poor, you can start seeing some pretty significant deterioration. This is Allison Avenue. We've actually rebuilt this uh since this picture was taken. Uh this was a twenty-twenty image, uh and then Hudson Avenue, uh which is where we're gonna have some construction this year. Again, you can see the deterioration and the distressing uh joints and cracks in the pavement. Then we get to very poor, so this is a full rebuild section, uh South Juliet Avenue here, and then College Heights Road. And then this would be a Sirius, which is uh Sunset Avenue. This is just south of Claflin. And then this would be considered failed, so this is Fort Riley Boulevard uh between Westwood and Pliska Lane, which we actually just applied for a grant to repair. So this is also another one. We're gonna Band-Aid this thing through the summer, and we're hoping to get a uh KDOT ninety-ten grant for this uh repair yet this year. So again, our overall pavement condition act index is a seventy-one based on our twenty twenty-three criteria. Uh you can see the greens, yellows, and reds, uh obviously still a lot of reds to get done. A lot of areas in the green that are relatively new streets, and that's kind of our concern is as those greens start moving down, then they're gonna pull your average down. There's a lot of streets in green that have been built since the uh mid-two thousands, and those streets are in good condition now, but it's a large number of total streets. So as that weighted average starts moving down, our concern is our pavement index condition's gonna come down too. So real quick on some financials, um our pavement surface quantities first. Uh sixty-six percent are local streets, twenty-six percent are collectors, eight percent are arterials. And then this is our center line lane miles over here, uh two-hundred-and-twenty-four total center line mid lane miles. Yeah.
Could you just explain that term, please?
Sure. So there's two ways that you measure uh streets. One is center line miles and one is lane miles. Center line miles are, if you picture McCall Road, you have a five-lane section. That center line down McCall Road is measured as so many feet of center line lane miles. Then if you measure it by just lane miles, you'd measure that distance multiplied by five because you have five lanes. So our total lane miles is somewhere in the five-hundred-and-fifty range, five-hundred-and-forty. But just the center line miles, or just the center line lane miles, is two-hundred-and-twenty-four. So it's two different ways to measure it. Lane miles is probably a little bit more accurate because it takes into account that width or that total area, but um this is just our center line lane miles. Go ahead. Yeah.
All right, I'm a little confused because you just said that center lane, is is there, is this incorrect on your table? You just, I thought you said center lanes is about five-hundred.
Lane miles. So again, if you took McCall Road and you measured the total distance of McCall Road on lane miles, you'd have to multiply it by five because you have five lanes. Center lane miles just measures the center line of the roadway.
Okay, so this column here is center lines?
Center line, yeah, just that total distance. It it doesn't take into account the width of the roadway.
All right, so you have a typo on your table. Cause you have center lane miles.
Okay. Center lines, yeah, okay, I see it, thank you.
My confusion. Thank you.
Uh so back to our pavement surface quantities, uh functional class, so again, local collector and arterials. Locals, we got about two-point-two million square yards, and this takes into account that width that you were just talking about, Commissioner. Uh the locals, two-point-two million, collectors are one-point-oh-eight million, and then arterials are four-hundred-and-forty thousand. So that, that's your total width or your total area. So again, back to our standards, good, satisfactory, fair, poor, and then our ranges from zero to a hundred. And we plot those out. This is what our current PCI assessment looks like. So as of March of twenty twenty-three, so it's about a year old, it doesn't take into account last winter's abuse. So obviously, you would, you'd expect these bars to come down a little bit, but as you look at it, uh obviously, this good, you know, being such a large percentage is a, it's a good and a bad. It it makes us feel good that we have good streets, but also as that weighted average starts coming down, our concern is that's gonna pull the rest of the averages down. So this is a uh graph of our backlog compared to our annual funding budget, and it looks at five different scenarios for funding and um do-nothing, all the way up to spending uh about six or seven million dollars a year. Uh we are, current funding is about four million a year. That's about where we land with combination of general fund, street sales tax, and uh special street and highway. So that current fund here, you can see it's kind of a flat graph, which, you know, is good and bad. It's good because we flattened out that, that declining slope that we started with in twenty seventeen. That graph was a negative concave down in seventeen. We flattened it out, so we're making some progress. Uh obviously, you know, if you want your PCI to go up, you have to spend more money. Uh gets us up to about ten million a year as a purple, and then the do-nothing uh zero-dollar budget uh is the black and is declining. So again, our annual condition versus budget levels, um uh different uh scenarios that we run out with the model. Again, this one also, this is our five-year post-rehab backlog, so when you look at this graph, your backlog is everything from fifty back. So these are areas that are in your backlog. You know they have to be replaced. It's a full-depth, full removal, full replacement schedule. Uh it's not just a simple uh connect patches and and patch things together. So as you look at that backlog, which is those less than fifty, uh this graph gives you an idea of what you gotta spend in order to uh keep your PCI rated the same. So uh roughly three million dollars a year, your PCI would be seventy-two, but you know, obviously, that's a declining curve. So you wanna um spend up towards your four million a year to get your graph to flatten out, which is kind of the area that we're in now when you look at these graphs. They're not increasing, they're not decreasing, but they're staying the same, which is, you know, it makes you feel better that the model's accurate because it's predicting four million dollars a year, you're gonna stay level, which is about what we've been doing. We've been spending about four million dollars a year, and we've uh, we've flattened that graph out. Uh again, this is a twenty twenty-three survey uh for city streets and thoroughfares. Uh obviously, you know, thoroughfares and collectors, arterials are larger streets that a lot of people uh travel on, and um there's quite a bit of concern about the condition of the existing streets. Now, about forty percent are satisfied or very satisfied, uh about sixty percent are are unsatisfied or or want streets to be in a little bit better condition. Uh for funding options, this is from our twenty fifteen survey, so it's a little bit old data, but it's the latest that we have. At that time, about twenty-five percent prefer to sales tax, twenty-one percent were property tax, thirteen percent were cussed to other services. So funding sources, this is the multiple sources that we use to fund the street sales tax for all of our street maintenance. About two-point-seven million is special street maintenance fund, about one-point-three million is special street and highway, and six-fifty is general fund. Now, these are averages over the years, so they do go up and down. This graph is an average of the last several years. For this year, our general fund, we're probably gonna cut to zero for budget cuts. We're probably not gonna spend a lot of money out of general fund. We're trying to save as many pennies out of that fund as we can. Uh and that's uh part of the reason why we're not gonna do Blument this year between Eleventh and Fourth. Uh we're going to wait and try to buy one more year out of that existing roadway to try to save that six-fifty. So total revenues from sales tax, special street maintenance fund. Again, that fund started in twenty sixteen. This is a graph of total revenue received, so this is the, the total revenues. You can see that they're increasing, they're increasing uh very well. Last year, we did uh clear just over three million. We're on budget for about three-point-two million this year. Uh again, that three-point-two plus another million out of special street and highway gets you to your four million. Uh that's again, the number that we wanna get to in order to flatten out that curve, that degradation curve in our model. Uh couple slides down, I'll show you the issues with generating that four million. Uh we've increased our revenues at about a three-point-one percent annual increase. So our street maintenance funds generate sales tax about three-point-one percent more every year. This is uh contractor-only maintenance repairs, had a special street and highway fund. Again, some years, twenty seventeen, twenty twenty-one, we reduced that special street maintenance fund um outputs, and then uh several years, we raised them up too. So this is contractor-only maintenance on expenditures for sales tax. Uh then special street and highway, our objectives and goals of that traditional gas tax fund. Uh special street and highway gas tax has not been increased since nineteen ninety-three. Uh there's about eighteen cents of federal and about fourteen cents of state. Uh that general fund has stayed the same since nineteen ninety-three. So it, it hasn't generated a lot more money than it did in the nineties. I got a graph here to show you about that a little bit, but roughly speaking, it generates about a million dollars. We typically use this for debt service on maintenance project. We do purchase some equipment and materials out of that to reduce general fund costs. Uh it is an operational expense for city labor, again, to reduce general fund costs. We do balance and funds and revenues uh with private contractors, and we also use it to provide local match funds for state and federal projects.
Uh can you go back to the last slide?
Sure.
So this is, this is saying we spent four-and-a-half million dollars on contractors last year?
As a special street and highway. Yep.
And how much did we collect out of that?
Well, we only collected about a million seven-five, but if you look at previous years, we didn't spend our whole allocation. Special street and highway allows you to roll over funds year to year.
Okay. Um but that's really saying like we spent all of the money that we need to maintain our current uh conditions on contractors last year.
That's a correct statement.
Okay.
But this also takes into account grant matches.
Okay.
So special street and highway, we do use for some grant matches. So there's some signalization grants we got in there, uh Juliet bricks we have in there. So there's those grant matches also that are coming out of this fund.
And and are those grant matches included in your calculation for the four-and-a-half million?
If it's a street project, yes. Yep.
So it's not really that we need to spend four million dollars a year to maintain, cause obviously, if Blument's gonna cost us almost a million dollars, that, all right.
Well, in in order to keep your PCI level, you'd have to spend four million dollars maintaining streets.
Okay.
Some years, maybe you spend three-point-two million, some years, maybe you spend four-point-eight, but at the end of the day, as you look over that ten-year average, you wanna get four million dollars.
Okay. Wow, that's just, that's a lot of, and I'm sure that's a lot because of of our staff shortages and stuff like that.
Yeah, and some of this too is, we may bid a project in late twenty twenty-two, that project accounts for that spending in twenty-two, even though you actually aren't doing the work till twenty-three.
Okay.
And same thing with the KDOT grants. So KDOT may bid a project in November, but you might not actually do work until the following October. So at bid, when it's bid, that's when we deduct that payment out of special street and highway because we have to reserve those funds. So even though you're pulling that money out, you may not spend it for a year, a year and a half.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So overall, this year, we're spending four million dollars out of special street and highway. Some of that is grant matches, cause we've had several grants we've been awarded this year, Juliet bricks, safe process of the school, those, those sorts of things. We've taken those funds out of this, out of this to set aside, if you will, or, I mean, at the federal level, you'd call it a uh earmark. You'd earmark those funds for that specific project.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So again, provide local grant matching funds for state and federal projects. So here's your gas tax, again, twenty-four cents, oops, excuse me, twenty-four cents here in state excise tax. So total state's twenty-four, and then uh the federal government's about eighteen, so about forty-two cents on every gallon that you purchase goes to gas tax of some sort. And just to be clear, if you purchase gas in Wichita or Goodland, all of that money goes into a pot, and then that pot is divided amongst the cities and counties. So if you buy your gas in Manhattan, you may or may not be getting that money back to Manhattan. Does that make sense? There's a formula that the state and the federal government uses to disperse those funds. We're technically a net increase. I think we get back about one-point-oh-three percent uh on every dollar that we send in. So cities typically are net positives, counties are typically a little bit net negatives. They're both very close, and you're talking pennies on thousands of dollars, but roughly speaking, we're a net positive. So our motor fuel taxes, special street and highway, again, motor fuel taxes haven't changed since nineteen ninety-three. Uh you can see they've gone up and down throughout the years. Some years, more gas was bought, some years, less gas was bought. But overall, since twenty twelve, the increase has been point-zero-zero-eight-nine percent a year. So very, very little increase in uh gas tax. If you look at twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two, we've averaged point-zero-zero-five-five percent. So again, very, very little change in the gas tax. There's a lot more cars than there are on the road today than there's ever been, and those cars are driving more miles, but they're more fuel-efficient. So they're using less gas. So contractor-only maintenance repair funders from special street and highway, again, goes up and down. Some years, we spend more, some years, we spend less, but overall, we try to get to that uh two-and-a-half, three-million-dollar mark. Objectives and goals of city crews for this year, so we do have some equipment and materials we've been purchasing. Uh operations, snow expense, or operational expenses for city labor, snow and ice removal. Our goal again is to produce a million dollars in value for each year for the ten years on pavement preservation. Last year, we had about a million one, so we did meet our goal last year. We're very concerned this year with the lack of labor force, that we're gonna make that goal again. Uh you saw the areas where we're gonna concentrate on, and then obviously, we do emergency repairs, emergency floodfights, storm repairs, those sorts of things that pull us off of doing street repairs in the summertime. Seems like all of our storms, obviously, are mainly May, May to September, so that's when we get pulled off, which is our prime time to do streets also. So cubic yards of concrete installed by city crews per year, uh twenty seventeen, about four thousand cubic yards. Last year, about one, or fifteen hundred. Uh again, you know, as you go past the COVID years, we've really struggled with the labor force in this area, and we're not the only one. Other cities are struggling with those same things too. I'm sure you've all read about that. Private sector's struggling. That blue-collar workforce is just really hard to find right now. It's hard to find, and there's competition for them. And we're competing against local contractors for that same pool. So asphalt tons installed by city crews, um twenty seventeen, about four hundred. Uh last year, as you saw in that graph, was about two-fifty or so. Again, when you put that into a dollar value, about a hundred and ten dollars a ton, you know, you can get your value that, that our crews are doing, that we're not paying a contractor to do. And then, of course, potholes filled. Twenty twenty-three was what I would call a down year. Most of the weather events this year happened in January. Uh I think that our, our twenty twenty-four numbers are probably gonna be fifteen to twenty thousand range. We're probably gonna end up in that range. Obviously, if we get a seven-inch snow on Thanksgiving, that number's gonna go way up, but um these again are year by year. So December thirty-first, we cut it off, and then we start with a new year, and it's uh very much weather-dependent. Twenty nineteen, though, was kind of our last really difficult year where we had a lot of potholes. I don't know if you remember that. Really bad winter. We had a bad January, and about two-thirds of February was really cold, lots of snow. Twenty nineteen was really kind of our record year. So the next four years, kind of areas where we've identified that we wanna get to, uh Northview area, Vanessa Drive and Stone Point area with asphalt, uh concrete areas. concrete areas that are full depth repair, Walters Drive, and that's actually another one we're probably going to bid before the end of the year or first part of next year. Walters Drive by Eisenhower School all the way to TCB. North Ethers Road neighborhood, West Reef Avenue neighborhood, McDowell Avenue, and then Bell Haven. And then for asphalt full depth, probably in 2026, Martin Luther King Jr. Drive from Anderson to Points. There is some utility work that also has to happen in that area. So that's going to be a pretty major project between Points and Anderson, and then from Points south to Fort Riley Boulevard, there's some storm sewer work and some water main work. We're kind of penciling that in for 2026. It may slide to 2027, depending on how much utility work we have to do in there. There's very little water main. There's two inch water main in there from the 1940s. No storm sewer. There's, there's a lot of things there that have to happen, and so we're probably looking at 2027 before we would get to that area. And then Sunset Avenue will be next year. Again, we're doing some utility work in there. We're working on a large diameter water main between Anderson and Claflin, and then Kimball Avenue, Candlewood Drive to Hudson. I think you heard in the CECO presentation a couple of weeks ago, we're looking at that maybe in 2025. Kimball Avenue has to compete with Hudson. I can't have Hudson closed and Kimball Avenue at the same time. So as soon as Hudson gets done, we'll jump up to Kimball, but we need to get Hudson done first because that's our detour route. So summary of the overall program, we are meeting our target of sales tax, about 1.9 to 2 million dollars expenditure per year with contractors. We are meeting our minimum repairs in Special Street Highway Gas Fund. The fund is stressed with budget cuts. Again, Blumentz is a street we would like to mill and overlay this year, but we're going to wait until next year and try to Band-Aid that through one more year. For our city crews, our challenges or workforce retention, 2023, we lost about 4,100 hours of productivity with a half crew missing. And then challenges, obviously, with general fund cuts and just overall funding. So concrete street replacement costs, remember, our sales tax fund is going up at 3.1%, but our costs are going up at 7.5%. So the good news is we're generating more money. The bad news is our money isn't going as far as we typically have have it going in 2017 and 18. Some of that is labor force. Our contractors are competing for the same labor force that we are. So you know, that that's a bidding war for that labor. Our material prices have not gone up substantially. They have gone up, but not substantially. It's really the labor force that we're all competing for. Our asphalt mill and overlay, again, our sales tax has gone up about 3.1%, but our costs have gone up about 7.7. So again, as you, you know, look out, your buying power is less every year. Schilling has has talked to me about their challenges with their labor force too. They're actually a full crew down. They were a full crew down all last year. I'm sure you hear on the radio that they're hiring and you can go apply, so they would love it if you would, but so is every other contractor. So we're all competing for the same labor force. So questions on streets before I jump to safe routes? Yes, Commissioner?
Yeah, so I I I know like some of those streets that we have on the on the backlog, those are just going to get kind of patched up. I just, for instance, I drove down Sunset on the way here.
Yes.
And it's, it's pretty bad. And I know a lot of that was from that winter storm, and those were cold patches that don't really stay very well anyways. So as I'm assuming there's just some some patchwork that's going to happen along those roads?
Yeah, Sunset was a road that we actually really wanted to do this year. Anderson to Claflin right here. We really wanted to do it this year, but we have a bunch of utility work we have to do at the same time. So we're gonna, we're gonna wait till we get hot patch or or heat patch.
Yeah.
We're going to mill it with our own crews, going to go out and mill spots and then overlay it. I don't know if you've noticed that cold patch is starting to show its wear.
Yeah.
There's a lot of spots in town that that cold patch is not hanging in there. So as we go into the spring and we get more precipitation, more moisture, those those cold patches are going to get worse. So next week or the following week, when Schilling opens and they're going to go do casement, we can also go get hot patch at that time, and then we're going to hit all those areas. Sunset is an area I wanted to do this year, but we're just not ready with all the utility work we have to do.
Yeah. And then on the labor costs, is that increasing because we're having to contract that out and we pay more for the contractors than we do just to have in-house crews do the work or?
Yeah, that'd be a correct statement.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so how do you kind of as a, you know, a leader in the of the road crews and stuff like that, how do you see us being able to compete a little bit, be a little bit more competitive for those folks?
So there's a lot of things that we're looking at. HR is doing a great job of looking at some different recruiting techniques. We're actually doing some in-house where we're going to conferences and we're going to K-State Engineering Conferences. We also team with K-State Civil Engineering Department in their Construction Management Department for senior design projects. So we're out in the community trying to generate, you know, generate a buzz and trying to get people to apply for what we have. Right now, it's tough. It's a really tough labor market to try to get people to apply for jobs, especially jobs that are hot in the summer and they're cold in the winter. They are not easy jobs, and you know, as as the son of a of a small business construction owner, I understand those jobs are tough to do. You know, they are, they are really hard to do, and it's hard to get those people to go out and do those when you can go to McDonald's and make 15 bucks an hour in the air conditioner and the heater. You've got a set schedule. You don't have to worry, did it rain today? Can I work today? Am I not working today? Am I going to get froze out over the winter for four weeks? Those are all tough things to to sell to somebody that's 22 years old.
Yeah.
All we can do is just keep getting our message out, getting our message out that we're a quality place to work, that we want you to be here. We want you to to add or to advance. When you get here, we have opportunities for advancement and training. And you know, just keep having those conversations.
Sure.
But at the end of the day, a 22 year old, you know, engineer that's getting out of college $100,000 in debt, it's hard to tell them, come work for us and make less than going to Kansas City.
Yeah.
Because you know, if I was 22 year olds and $100,000 in debt, I'd want to go pay that off as quick as I could too.
Sure.
But that's a great question, and I think a lot of people around the country are asking that exact question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
When you went through your presentation, at a number of times, you were saying budget cuts, budget cuts. Is that something that going into this year, you had a lower number, or are these cuts to your current 24 budget that you're going to spend less?
So the 2024 budget, we're trying to not spend out of this 650 in the general fund to try to shore up some general fund revenues. We've been coding stuff to Special Street and Highway, so all your cold patch material, your hot patch material, all of those things, we've been coding to Special Street and Highway in order to keep that general fund as positive or as much revenue in there as possible.
So I guess my, it is necessary to you that you're having to cut your budget, what revenue source is down or expense item is up that necessitates that?
It's the overall general fund cash balance. It's the same 16 million we started with last year and ended with 10.
Right, but you had a budget to spend so much and to bring in so much. We should be able to stick to that budget unless there's revenue source down or a expense item up.
Yeah, we're seeing inflation, not only in what we're buying, but even being fully staffed in certain levels of the general fund is costing us more than, you know, the year prior.
So you're having certain line items in the 24 budget that are going over budget?
Well, from a general fund perspective, we're trying to avoid that. This is an early option that we have in order to leverage some additional gap in the general fund. We looked at Special Street and Highway to pick up some of those asphalt and concrete material type of expenses.
Yeah, all I'm asking for is what accounts is going up that this one you need to offset?
It's a matter of holding it steady in the general fund and not dipping down below 10 million as a cash.
Again, I just, I don't expect to get it now, just to know where. There must be some account somewhere where you say we're going to spend 100, we're going to have to spend 150, so he has to reduce 50. So again, in a P and L, I usually can go in and see what accounts am I over, what accounts are my under, how they're making up, or did I have it a revenue?
And I think Brian's earlier comment really speaks to this too. Towards the end of 23, he was pretty fully staffed. And now here in the spring, he's not. So we don't have consistencies across the board when it comes to people, and we don't have consistencies when it comes across the board to commodities and contractual services. We're constantly looking at these things on a monthly basis. We don't, it's the lack of consistency that puts us in this position where we dial things back and we have to sit there and wait and watch and see how things unfold. But our staffing levels are up and down trends as well as our, you know, commodities and contractual services. We back off on contractual services in order to give us cushion on the commodities. But these are things we look at on a monthly basis. And I, I mean, I can appreciate your comment, and we, we can do a profit and loss statement. We've given them to you all before. It is difficult to sit here and say we're that dialed in budget by budget, department by department, on all things that are moving up and down. We can, we can generate some more reports for you and get that to you and show you, but this is a strategy we've implemented in the past. It's allowed us a little bit more cushion in the general fund.
Yeah, I just saying from, because obviously it's a sensitive subject with streets and people wanting repaired. It'd be nice to be able to tell someone, well, here's where we're over, here's where the money's going and why you're not seeing that street, street repaired, or why we're cutting it because of budget cuts is because this is what's costing.
Yeah, and those funds are still in that budget. I mean, we could still spend them before the end of the year. But as of now, we're not spending those dollars because we're waiting to see how the year transpires.
But the question really applies to every department within the general fund. And when we look at certain departments last year, did they overspend? Yeah, they did. And primarily in your your park and rec department. Our operational subsidy last year was over $8 million. Prior years, it was five and a half to six and a half.
And I was just. So how much over? And it was eight million and we budgeted seven million, something like that in nature?
Probably about six and a half, seven.
Yeah. So.
I was just gonna.
But that, but that I could answer the question then. We spent it on parks and rec versus splitting it on streets.
Well, the other aspect is those are the two biggest departments. So they, and fire in the general fund. So you know, if you have reduced expenditures in the other small departments, they don't equal the magnitude that reduced spending in the large departments do, and and clearly, material cost is is a huge.
Right. I mean, if it's this material cost within the departments, higher contracts within street department means that there's going to be less streets done, can explain that. When we say there's a budget cut to streets and we're not getting something done, that begs the question. We cut the budget here to fund the budget someplace else, so what was that? It was parks and rec, we took the money out of streets, but parks and rec, that would answer my question.
I think it's, I would categorize it more as a hold. I mean, we're preserving these funds for if our sales tax stays flat or goes up or starts going down and continues to go down, we'll have to access those funds. If it, if halfway through the year, we're good, we'll be able to plan better for the end of the year. So, so I would, I wouldn't necessarily call it a specifically a cut. I would call it a hold.
So, okay. I was just responding to the budget.
Yeah, no, I I think it's a good question because even I, even sitting here, I wouldn't have used the words budget cuts. Because those, to me, have a different meaning than utilizing a different revenue stream or a different source to fund a particular item versus revenue streams that are coming into the general fund. But when you want to look at back at 2023, park and rec, fire, public works, they were stressed. I mean, they they all became fully staffed at about midpoint in 2023, and we saw it through the end of the year. But since then, we have had reductions in staffs. We haven't hired back, so we're having savings in that respect, but at the same time, we're trying to offset some expenses other ways in order to see where we are mid-year during the budget season. We'll provide you all that data.
Right, yeah. And my angle is simply like if it's $4 million for this budget, if we don't spend $4 million, it's going to be, okay, we needed the money to go spend somewhere else. What was the answer?
Yeah.
Because I always get said, we did the sales tax and you just, you got the sales tax money, and then you took the money out of the other bu- bucket and didn't spend it, which in a sense, we don't spend the $4 million. We did.
And I, I think the, I think the data shows though, where we didn't spend it in one year, we spent more the following year. So on average, I think we're.
On average, we've been hitting that $4 million. Yeah.
Yeah.
Some years have been less, some years have been more. Again, a lot of that depends on when you bid those projects because that's when you capture those dollars. Yeah.
And the other biggie is our, the last couple of years, we have bought a lot of equipment and vehicles, and those have cost way more. You know, we used to come to you and we're going to buy, we, we ask our locals to bid, but we typically have bought off the state contract. Well, the state contract went away during COVID, and it's, it's starting to get back, but but everything was more. And so that's not something we see come down real quickly. And so that's something that we're going to say, okay, we're going to limp that vehicle along more, and we'll have more repair parts, but we won't have that big cost because we can go buy some more material that we need instead of the vehicle. But we need a operational vehicle in order to haul the equipment or the material to to go do the repair job.
Yeah. Any other questions on streets before I jump to safe routes?
I just wanted to to comment. It's sort of depressing to hear that we're, you know, delaying some projects for whatever priority reason, because emails I get, they don't say a whole lot, just say commissioners fix the streets.
I get those too, yes.
You know, and 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 that's a tough one. You know, how do you, you know, how do you answer that? And I guess, you know, what you've essentially briefed here is you need more money and you need more people.
We'll need more than $4 million this year. This year is going to be a very expensive year for street maintenance. And we have several large contracts out already, and we're going to have several more before summer. That $4 million is going to be, we'll, we'll easily go above that this year.
Well, are we going to have the funds to be able to do that?
To do everything I want to do? No. No.
Well, it'd be interesting to get the delta on there and then take a real hard look at where the priorities are. I mean, you know, all these folks that daily tell us to put more money in the streets. If Parks and Rec is eating up that money, you know, then there's got to be a priority because people wanted Parks and Rec also. We don't have enough to fund both. You know, where's the priority? Is it the streets or is it Parks and Rec?
Or is it the fire department?
Yeah, there's a lot of demands.
In my mind.
They're all out of the same pot.
The fire department's got to be the top of the list.
I don't disagree, but you know, when we talk mill levies in September.
Yeah, I understand, and we, you know, when we've talked about raising the sales tax and there's some big pushback on that, no one wants the mill levy raised either. So you know, that that's the dilemma, and you know, when you get these emails and say, okay, fix it. You know, if you, if you pull one piece out, it's going to hurt another piece. It's, 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 it's a puzzle.
And we constantly have to weigh what can we fix and what has to wait constantly, every, almost every week.
Yeah, and 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 I think, you know, you do a pretty good job, I think, of getting information out, but you know, I think, you know, the public that doesn't think we're doing anything, you've got a website, city website, that has past projects, future projects.
Current projects.
Ongoing projects that people can log into.
Yep.
And we maybe need to publicize that more. And then I've tried to push, people sign up on that in touch to get that in the zone, you know, briefing, because it talks about all the road closures and detours that tends to irritate people. So I think that we could put a little bit more emphasis on people using those two tools. Because while it doesn't solve the problem, at least it explains.
Yeah.
You know, what we're doing and paints a little better picture of the perception people have.
And there's going to be a lot of orange cones this summer, so just be prepared to find detours and delays, and it's going to take a little bit longer for you to get to work and all of those things. So there's going to be a lot of, lot of orange cones this summer.
And that's actually a good thing when you're talking about fixing the streets. So I, you know, I'm I'm prepared to take grief on that. You want the streets fixed, we're doing it. That's why the orange cones are there.
But obviously, we can't have all, every street closed at the same time. I mean, there is a, there's a little bit of a jigsaw puzzle that goes along when we look at, okay, I've closed this route, now I have to go to this route. Or this route's closed, I gotta go, I can't have all the streets closed at all the same time.
And I appreciate the comments you made like not closing Hudson, whatever, because that's another thing people complain about. They say, why are you closing all the streets? Is anybody there? Pay attention to the detours. And of course, the answer is yes.
Hudson is horrible, and I don't disagree with the condition, and I would have liked to got to it a couple of years ago, but we had Kimball closed, and I need Hudson to be my detour. So we've been waiting on Hudson. Same thing with Sunset. I would like to do Sunset this year, but I got to wait one more year because I'm already on Dennison, I'm already on Anderson. I have to have a way for people to get to work, and Sunset's going to be it.
Yeah, and I think it's also important, as you, as you mentioned, to, to coordinate those major street repairs with the underground piping.
Yeah.
And those things, because it's really.
We only want to do it once.
Yeah, it's really crazy to, to fix a street and then tear it up to put a pipe under it.
Yep. We also have to coordinate with county and with state, because, you know, KDOT has streets closed, so we have to, you know, Seth Child is under construction or Fort Riley Boulevard's under construction, we have to coordinate with the state also, because we have state routes in the city that carry a lot of vehicles.
Yes, I think we're doing a, a good job there, it's just that maybe it's just not getting, getting publicized properly, so appreciate that.
Any other questions on streets before we go to safe routes? And Commissioner Ropel, thank you for reminding me about the safe routes when we talked about traffic. Because there was a lot of things that I didn't have in the traffic presentation that I have in here, so thank you for the reminder. Again, Safe Routes to School update, that, uh, sales tax initiative, we peeled five percent off of the sales tax for Safe Routes to School. We've completed thirteen of those projects, uh, completed, uh, everything listed in two A through two C. In total to date, we spent about one point oh seven million dollars to date. Uh, we've collected about nine hundred and five thousand, so we're just a touch overspent, which is why we're not doing a Safe Routes this summer. Uh, we're gonna let those revenues catch up to what we've spent so far, so that those two will balance out, so we don't have to take money from somewhere else. So here's our thirteen, uh, locations, uh, obviously all the way around the city. We've tried to do at least one project at each school. Uh, recall, the original Safe Routes to School plan was for elementaries only. So we haven't done any, uh, Safe Routes at either the junior highs or senior highs. The new plan that is adopted does allow us to do junior and senior highs. So you're gonna see some, uh, Safe Routes to Work School at those two schools. Yes?
Are we looking at any traffic calming, um?
I got a whole bunch in here.
Good.
Yes, so Safe Routes to School, uh, obviously we did a bunch of sidewalk work, but we've also done some traffic calming, back to Commissioner Ropel's discussion a, a couple of weeks ago. So bulbouts at Juliet and Pierre, we've got lane restrictions at Browning and Dickens. We also pulled those curbs in to get a shorter walking distance for the walkers. Uh, again, some Safe Routes to School stuff, uh, bulbouts and a sign crossing at Gary and Lombard Drive, Hudson Trail's just off to the left. Uh, and then we've done some leading pedestrian phase and signage. So, what a leading pedestrian phase is, when you push the button to walk, it turns all the signals red and it turns that walk to walk, so that pedestrian gets about halfway across the street then before the light turns green, so that that person turning right sees that ped that's halfway out. Uh, we've got leading ped phases at Anderson and Reith, at Kimball and Candlewood, at McCall and TCB, and at Eleventh and Points. Those are our leading ped phases. Some more improvements, uh, we've got a island refuge at Dickens and Griffith. We also have some bulbouts with an RRFB crossing at Lee and College Heights here, as well as an island refuge on Little Kitten. So these are obligated Safe Routes, uh, funding, uh, Phase One through our new master plan. This is the new master plan that was just, uh, completed and adopted. Total, again, is about one point oh seven million, or just slightly overspent what we've taken in for revenues. So with that, Safe Routes questions.
I think these are great, um, personally. Um, again, you know, going back to people speeding through school zones and stuff, like prevention is, I think, much more, uh, effective than, than enforcement. Um, and it just makes things safer for the pedestrians, uh, so, yeah.
Especially around elementaries.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Um, so it's great, thank you.
You might try the Irish way. They put how many people have died on various streets and they.
Okay. I haven't heard of that.
Yep. You can decide if you want to go Route A, where only forty-five people have died, or Route B, where.
Any questions on Safe Routes? Again, for the public, it's gonna be a lot of cones this summer, a lot of detours. We apologize, but by September, we'll have a lot of streets fixed.
Mr. I just want to point out and appreciate the work that Brian and his staff does to leverage our local funds, uh, for grants and significant, uh.
Yeah.
Whether it's safety improvements for signalization work, uh, for Safe Routes money, uh, from the state, the partnership on Fort Riley Boulevard, uh, that makes a big difference. And that, that is part of our story that we don't tell real well. And because it does make that total investment well over our target when you include the funds from the grants, big time on Juliet, so.
And Fort Riley Boulevard, yeah.
And Fort Riley Boulevard.
Uh, we've, we typically get about three to four million dollars a year in grants, uh, from KDOT. We have a really great partnership with them. Uh, we have become a lot more selective on our grants because of just the Buy American and the Davis Bacon. We've kind of tried to stay away from those a little bit because they do increase costs significantly, but KDOT has been a big, big partner with us and they've really helped us in a lot of ways.
And, you know, even the, the ATA grants we've gotten.
Yeah.
Uh, that.
That's true.
I was delighted to see that you.
Avenue, the library and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, the work we're doing on Fremont, I mean, all of those, if you add all of those in product expenditures into our total per year street work, it's significant.
Yeah.
Well over our target.
The, the ATA, you know, we get, uh, we just have to have a ten percent match for many of those things, so.
Yeah.
Delighted to see you use that possibility.
Yeah, several million dollars from FERTA, they've, Anne's been a great partner for us and she's also a big advocate for Safe Routes to School. And, you know, has really taken that message to the federal and state level for us very well.
Um, one last question.
Yes.
Is there any plan for another sidewalk along Claflin, um, west of college? Like between college and Seth Child, there's, there are no crosswalks.
Okay, so there's sidewalk on the north side, the entire distance.
Yeah.
The sidewalk on the south side goes about to the end of the health complex.
Uh-huh.
And then it crosses. Uh, we don't have any signalization in budgets for Claflin. Um, there is some, there is some work that needs to be done on Claflin.
Sure.
Uh, from a safety standpoint, um, we applied for a grant several years ago, got a two million dollar grant for some safety improvements and roundabouts. Uh, the commission at that time, uh, voted against it. Um, Claflin probably needs a corridor plan. It probably needs some master planning from Dennison all the way to Seth Child. Um, it's something on my radar that I would really like to get to, but my traffic engineer quit on me last year, so. Uh, it's something that, that I'd like to do, some sort of a corridor plan.
Yeah.
Um, that's become a very busy roadway, Claflin has, and they have a lot of accidents at Browning.
At Browning intersection is not, like, no, no, no way to turn safely on that, it's not good.
When I got that safety grant, I believe it was in twenty-fourteen or fifteen, we had about forty accidents in five years. The last time I looked, we were over seventy.
Wow.
So it's almost doubled in the last seven or eight years.
Yeah.
It's not an easy fix, it's, it's complex.
Sure.
And it needs a, a global view.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but yeah, I would like to get back to that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Then the next item on the list is Stormwater Flood Plane Management Program.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, my name is Bill Heatherman, I'm the Stormwater Compliance Engineer for the city. And today is really an overview of our stormwater and flood plane programs. Uh, probably many of you have heard, uh, pieces and parts of this before and we just wanted to kind of, uh, bring it all and put it into some perspective. Before we talk about stormwater, though, um, Karen Becker, our principal engineer, was at the K-State Transportation Conference today and before the meeting, she was relating some very novel and graphic pedestrian safety, public outreach programs that KDOT has. So when the topic came up, we thought, aha, this is the topic of the day. So, uh, uh, it is certainly, uh, something on, on lots of people's minds. Today, we wanted to just talk about, uh, some of the projects that we have going on, as well as some of the programs and policies. Some of these programs are longstanding and others are policy discussions that have been unfolding over recent years. And if you have questions or feedback as we go, please feel free. As far as construction goes, uh, we've had quite a bit of activity over the last couple of years and I'm sure many of you recognize, uh, these locations. I have just a couple of pictures and, uh, comments on a few. So obviously, the Manhattan Levy Project has been an intense and ongoing project. We are getting close, uh, to the end here with the phase that you've all seen. Uh, we have benefited from a very good contractor and very good working relationship with the Corps of Engineers, so an awful lot of upgrade work has been done. Um, just as a reminder, this is the, uh, first really intensive major upgrade to the levee since it was built in, uh, nineteen sixty, sixty-one. And the work is, uh, raised in some places, especially on the Big Blue Riverside, up to three feet for, uh, protection up to the one and three hundred, uh, chance event. But also very intensive structural work and foundation work to the levee. So, uh, you know, you imagine levies fail by water coming over the top, but it's actually the water that sneaks in underneath that really does the damage. So an awful lot of the, uh, work that's been done is things that you probably won't ever really notice unless you want to tour and we'll show you some of what's happening with it.
Just to add to that, I think, uh, something you should all be proud of is that really before all of the price escalation occurred, we were able to bid that project and got some great bids on it. Uh, not to say that there weren't some high prices, but the other thing that we did is, uh, we incorporated betterments, uh, that were major enhancement to our portion of the stormwater project and bid those, and that's been a, a huge, huge improvement overall.
What's happening?
We would have paid much more for if we'd have tried to do that ourselves.
What's happening with the railroad section?
So that's a separate phase, it's a future phase, uh, for the, the railroad gap and the, the Corps is working on, uh, a Phase Two for the levee and specifically, that'll be the, the primary project and trying to finalize an agreement with the railroad for the actual improvement. And I think that's making progress, but it'll probably be, I'd say at best, Bill, a couple of years before you see that being awarded and they'll come back to you all with a, a new agreement for, it'll be treated as a separate project.
Kind of a gap then, in the levee?
Well, it's, it's the same gap that's always been there, that we have to sandbag close. And so the goal is to get a, a better, more efficient and, uh, something that can be put together quicker, and get rid of quicker, because, you know, once you, once we sandbag that, we want to make sure the event's over before we reopen it. And so, it's to the railroad's benefit that, that becomes more efficient and more effective for the design solution. And I think, I think we're on a, a good track there.
Yeah, but to be, to be clear, though, there, there's not really, that's not a safety hazard. The, the, the levees built, there's always been a gap there, it's just a matter of how much time does it take to plug it when a flood event happens? And how much time does it take to unplug it? And, and the idea is to make that more efficient, but, but nobody should walk away with the idea that we only had a partially completed levee project. Because that is not the case.
Yes, that's correct. And as, uh, um, Ron was alluding to, I guess I'll move to the next. You know, we were able to accomplish some other, uh, important master plan level work at the same time as the levee project. Uh, the Hayes Drive encasement, uh, road gate well is a major investment that is part of our Kearney, uh, Bertrand Interceptor, uh, system ultimately that takes, uh, ultimately will be helping convey the water all the way from the, uh, east side of campus, Campus Creek runoff. Um, it's a very massive structure, so basically, not only did we upgrade the size of the conveyance underneath the levee, but because of how close it was to Hayes Drive, we went ahead and extended all the way so that you don't have a big, um, opening there, right there in, in what is the parkland. And that is work that is, is going, we're gonna get Hayes Drive open very soon. I, I commit to you, if you drive by, you can tell, it's, it's, uh, come out of the ground.
The old, Bill, go back, the, the old round structure, I think it was round, underneath Hayes Drive, was not as tall as one of those persons that you're looking at, or roughly thereabouts.
Yeah, it was.
So it's, it's a significant improvement. And what it does is, is there's a, there's a divider over, uh, along Tuttle Creek Boulevard that we can force more water this way, that before we didn't have a lot of ability to do, which put more pressure on the ditch going down to the river. So it, it's a, it's a, it's a great improvement and, uh, something that will help us immensely in our flood management when the gates are all closed.
Yeah, the old structure was a seventy-two inch, so six foot, so you'd have to take your hard hat off if you wanted to walk into it. Uh, Plymouth Little Kitten neighborhood, so, you know, you have your major projects, but we also want our neighborhood investments. This was an opportunity to address both stormwater, some groundwater seepage, uh, out of the hill slope and some street repairs that was completed several years ago. Uh, you know, the neighborhood projects, um, are very important, but they can be a very big challenge just to administer and construct because of the tight working space. Uh, does take a lot of cooperation with the neighbors and, and a very high-touch approach, which, uh, Leon Brown here is our project manager for that one and got to spend a lot of time with that neighborhood. Yeah. Um, we do, we have, uh, for the last ten years, been fairly active with taking FEMA grants to remove homes from the flood plain when a neighborhood project just would never be able to address. And the Village Drive area is one that, uh, was hit very hard, has had several flooding events and we're actually been able to work in a concentrated area. Uh, this winter, we removed, uh, the home at nine twenty-five Village Drive. So this was just a demolition, it was FEMA grant funded. And at the present time, then, there's only one remaining home on that side of the street that was in the area that was concentrated. We have had, I think, five others, uh, that were removed over the years. Uh, we continually, we pay attention to the states, call for projects and we have a, a plan and a priorities list. There's a couple that we have pre-applications in now that we'll find out about eventually. They're very slow processes, so you have to put your application in and wait a fairly long time. Uh, there was a partnership with Kansas State University to anticipate, uh, the development that they have, uh, north of Kimball and, uh, the impacts that that would have over time to the Marlet Channel. And so, uh, working with the various K-State entities, uh, worked out the opportunity to install, uh, this north campus, uh, corridor detention basins, there's two of them, uh, on Marlet Channel and a tributary, that are actually built in advance of really some of the longer range vision that'll play out. So, uh, those were finished, uh, just this last year and this is just, uh, uh, one of the locations while it was under construction.
Yeah, and Brian, you might jump in here, too, but, you know, the, the great thing about this is it reduces the flows on Marlet, so it helps the Marlet. But through the north campus corridor improvements along Kimball, they've been able to design more flow to go north that used to go through campus.
Correct.
And so that takes the relief off the level of water at the Blue Mont Hotel when we get a five-inch rain.
Yeah, both Kansas State Athletics and Kansas State Ag and the foundation all went out of their way to divert more water to the north, run them through these two ponds, slow down those rates, slow down rates in Marlet Channel, lower water surface elevations, uh, and then also take capacity off the, uh, Bertrand Box, which is rated at a two-year capacity. So every drop of water we can get to go north, regulate it through the detention ponds and then down to Marlet is, is a big positive for the downtown, uh, east watershed. Uh, Kansas State Ag was very generous and donated the easements for us. Uh, the foundation also donated quite a bit of easements for us, uh, several acres, in fact. Uh, and then athletics and the foundation also helped pay for the costs. So it's a three-way cost share. So they didn't have to do that because they're a state agency and we have no regulation on state agencies, but they stepped up to the plate and they did the right thing. Uh, it's actually probably one of the bigger, uh, stormwater successes for the last several years.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Bill.
This is a, a bank stabilization project, so natural stream banks are actually the other kind of, another type of challenge with stormwater. In this case, uh, what you don't see is the road that I was standing on to take that picture and, uh, the, um, the risk that we were running of having, uh, uh, road failure. There's also sanitary sewer in the background that needed to be protected. And on this one, we worked very strongly to incorporate a natural, uh, channel design. So there are hundreds of trees, uh, associated with all those little blue tubes sticking up. and this area will go back to a forested state, but on a more stable alignment with much more gentle slopes. So, that's something that we have tried to incorporate in several projects recently. It is opening up some new opportunities for natural channel preservation, but they're different types of projects. They have different learning curve on them, so we're still working through those. And there are other projects that we've constructed in the wings, but just to kind of give you a sense of what's under design, we have some major maintenance on the 17th and Leavenworth Drive corridor, older metal pipes. They just don't last forever, and they're usually under streets where it takes a lot to get to them. We're doing some, we're planning to do some work at the Marlat pedestrian tunnel. If you have kind of crossed underneath US 24 at Marlat, there's a pedestrian tunnel, but it, thing sat so low that water tends to kind of pond, and it gets to be a bit of a problem for passage. And then, what we call the TCB North Channel, which is really the downstream part of this Kearney-Bertrand interceptor, which is really from US 24 by IHOP around to Hayes Encasement. The projects associated with downtown are so large that we have to take them in bite-sized pieces, working from downstream up. So, the Hayes Encasement gate well was a necessary way to get the water out. The TCB North Channel is just the next segment up. And then, after that, we'll be figuring out how to get a bigger box underneath US 24 itself, which will be a project of its own, after which point then you can open up more neighborhood scale projects up most likely Kearney and Bertrand systems. And, and that kind of leads to the planning element. The downtown east and west master plan in particular is a, was a major investment of thinking and planning in, in 2016 is when it was completed, and it really has been the guide for our planning for about a 4.2 square mile area of the Ward Districts, Kansas State University, Aggieville downtown. This graphic up here, if you can see the numbers, that's just the sequencing of projects that we have in mind. And if you can see the four in kind of lime green, the eight in magenta, the nine in blue, and the 10 in orange, that, that alignment is the Kearney-Bertrand interceptor. That's basically running all the way up to Case State Campus. And then, if you can see the five and the six, that's the South Manhattan Interceptor. That takes kind of the western side. And if you see how close they come together in the middle, that's right around Aggieville and the Blument Hotel. There's actually some interesting hydraulics there where water kind of jumps the curb and goes one way or the other. So, it's been rather complicated to analyze. For that set of projects, we would really like to see some more federal help. And the main way to go about that is through FEMA and their brick grants. They're very competitive, they take a lot of analysis. So, we have right now kind of a baby step towards future brick grant eligibility. We've made an application for what they call direct technical assistance, have them help us look at some alternatives and some cost and benefit calculations and kind of a way to get onto FEMA's radar screen. So, that's a application we put in in February. I think you may all remember the, the staff agenda that came through. We haven't heard anything back yet, but it's just our way of kind of planning for the future. And then, we do still, as I mentioned, keep our eyes open to make, make applications for FEMA acquisitions and removals when those make sense.
So, Bill, while you're there, I just wanted to point out the, kind of the gray one in the bottom right half, CIP 1. That was a, a major project that put additional infrastructure through the levee system, and it also rebuilt some streets because the storm sewers under the street. So, again, that's a storm sewer project that, that helped with street maintenance. Some of them, streets hadn't been touched for a long time as well. But the big thing it did was reduce the, the impact of water going east on points downtown and impacting businesses there on five-inch rains that occasionally we get. So, that's a big improvement in all of these. You know, even when we did the South End redevelopment district, we put a big storm sewer underneath Forest Street with a, a new box through the, through the levee. So, the more of those that we can divert into smaller carriages, the, the better off we'll be. And, and five and six are big ones, so, as well as nine and, eight and nine. And, and so, it's good that the feds have some help out there because those are projects that, you know, will need some Fed help to, and state help to, to do that. The state hasn't been, that's an area they haven't participated in much in Kansas, is stormwater assistance, other than FEMA. I mean, they've done a good job there, but most of that's federal pass-through money. So, certainly not like they have in, in transportation routes.
Can I ask a technical question? What's the yellow squiggly line?
The yellow squiggly line that's kind of running there between 13 and 10 is the divider between the downtown east watershed and the downtown west watershed. So, it's basically a, in some places, very slight ridge line that keeps the water separated between what goes down Kearney Street versus what goes down South Manhattan.
Is that a natural formation, or is it something that's been constructed?
There would have been a ridge line there already, but then things are so flat that its exact boundary is kind of influenced by how the streets in the neighborhoods were also constructed over the decades. It, it would largely correspond to about what the dividing line was before.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, with all this work, do you think, what do you think are the chances that we'll see people riding kayaks down the streets like 10 years ago?
Our, our goal is to make those historical photos, not live-action shots, but we have decades before
Sure.
the investments were probably.
And it really just depends on what these future weather patterns are going to be.
Yeah.
You know, so, you know, the five-inch rain was pretty unusual, that we would get one of those, you know, once every five years maybe. But then, you'd get them back-to-back years. And so, you know, our five-inch rain's going to be seven-inch rains. Or, you know, and just, just that whole issue of what's happening to our intensities with, with climate. So, those are, those are big issues.
Well, I, I think, you know, folks are really, I mean, obviously, you can't not notice all of the stormwater work. So, it's, it's, we've made a lot of strides in that in the last decade.
Thank you, and I'll put my safety hat on. Kayaking down a flooded street is a terrible, terrible idea. So, please, please relay that on to anyone in your circles.
But I think it is really important to reiterate that what we're seeing with global warming is more intense storms, you know, that really do plummet down on us and make things very difficult, even with good stormwater planning.
Yes, thank you. And on that brick grant application, one of the priorities they give to applications is the degree to which we're planning for the future, including climate change, so. So, that's some of our projects, and the next part of this is to talk about the policies and programs that underlay those. And there are many, but on the bullet here are the ones that we thought we would highlight for you this evening. And so, I'll start with the stormwater criteria, which was a major achievement last year to get this, this done. So, the criteria document is really what guides project plans and reviews, both public and private. It's basically the go-to book that we use for evaluating technical designs. And the version we were using before was good for its time when it was adopted in 1995. So, it had almost reached 30 years. Now, we had been keeping up with the times, but it was taking addendums and, and some common understandings of practices that may or may not have been entirely documented. So, there was just this accumulation of need to get a revised manual together. We actually started on this before COVID. COVID kind of slowed things down, although it also gave us some quiet time for some of our writing. And it did go through two rounds of public review, and we did get quite a bit of input and comment, and were able to make some revisions. And it really reflects bringing in KDOT, Federal Agency Standard, peer cities in Kansas, and the best practices that we had seen grow over time. The major topics, and I won't go into them technically tonight, we've had some past presentations on them, but if you're ever curious, you can let us know, is more attention to the overflow system. So, a pipe system itself is never intended to carry the, the full flood. It's tended to be one part of a two-part system, so you get your common rains up to a 10-year storm underground where you're having pipe systems, but then you design your streets, your backyards and whatnot so that you can convey the remainder safely. It takes a lot of time and attention to get that done correctly. And where we have some of our historical problems, you can really see it's that second part of the system that was kind of left a little bit to, you know, the, the own devices. Detention basin and detention basin design in 95, what we had was pretty good for its time. We had made some interim updates, but that whole concept of how you used detention in a system-wide basis has really progressed a lot in that time period. We incorporated some guidance on natural stream protections. I say guidance, we, this was not a policy document, so we weren't saying what you had or had not do, but we were providing guidance so that if a, if a project wanted to conserve natural streams, there's technical guidance for what that would actually take so that you could actually have the benefits of natural streams without some of the streambank's instability or other problems that, that you might see if, if those design guidelines weren't there. We had had a big issue with flow rate estimates. Somehow, we had managed to have several different methods in our standards, which really didn't give the same answers. And so, various, you know, everyone had kind of worked out their own way of squaring that circle, but we brought together the best guidance we could find in order to kind of consolidate and make, make the systems work. A lot of the, some of the procedures in the old manual were actually based from an era before everyone had a computer on their desk. And so, an awful lot had advanced. And then, on submittals and studies, just better clarity of what we want to see, when we want to see it, how to kind of streamline that approach, yet still get good, solid, tangible information in a timely fashion so that you can make stormwater decisions while you still have the opportunity to implement them. Topography, stormwater is really something that needs to be thought of early in a design process. And then, we integrated with some of what's been happening in the water quality front. So, I introduced Karen and Leon back here. That was our team really to work through these over about a four-year period. And so, now, we're in the implementation phase as we continue. It is our commitment to not to wait another 30 years before we continue to keep it updated. So, I think you've probably heard presentations from community development about the Manhattan Development Code. The idea is that we want a living document where we can stay more timely and, and more responsive. Detention I mentioned, and a policy decision was made about a year and a half ago to look at a fee-in lieu option in select areas. And really, that 4.2 square mile downtown east and west drainage basin was the area that we adopted a service area on. The idea is that for some level of modest, smaller redevelopments, all the effort spent putting underground chambers and whatnot in, while it would provide a benefit, those same funds, if contributing towards this larger master plan, could provide more benefit. And so, using some of the best practices nationally for policy on fee-in-luwe detention, you all adopted an ordinance that set the way for that to happen, and then you all adopted a resolution establishing Service Area 1, which was the downtown east and west area. And so, that's in place. Those funds are being collected, and they will be expended towards these capital projects that I showed you, the four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. To date, we have had five projects make use of the fee-in-luwe policy and collected $180,000 total.
I do have one question, and I got a couple of emails from developers on the "in lieu of." And, and I guess the way we wrote that, and you may have to, I'm not sure. I remember when we did it, I thought it was a great idea, but my assumption was that everybody would do the "in lieu of." But apparently, the way it's written, it's voluntary, like you could still decide to put detention?
That's right, that's right. It's, it's written to be, to be a choice that, that is made available to developers, but they still can always resort to providing for detention.
You see, and that made sense to me at the time, but you know, the letters I got, they're talking about the watershed, and they're saying, hey, this is really a dumb idea if somebody does that at the very bottom of it. See, it does make sense at the top because you'd get some benefit out of the detention, but if it's down at the bottom, you know, where the levee is, should, should that be changed? I mean, you know, we're looking to relook that to just say, sorry, in these areas, because it doesn't make sense, you have to pay the fee in lieu of.
So.
That's what they recommended, a couple of letters I got.
Yeah, and, and, and I'm aware of those letters, and as I said, you know, our, our intent on policy is to remain in ongoing and open dialogue. So, I think at, at a technical level, we intend to have some more conversations with some of those comments. Detention, when used in a systematic method, provides many different benefits. And so, I, the, the places where we are requiring detention, including this service area, I think would all be very solidly shown to provide benefits. The trick you get into with upper and lower is upper and lower compared to what? I mean, there's, there's always something further downstream, so you have to be really precise if you're going to kind of wave it in an area. But again, that's a dialogue that we can continue to have with our engineering community.
You see, my impression just was that the "in lieu of" was just the better way to go almost 90% of the time because we needed that money to finish this, this giant amount of CIP projects. I think it was somewhere around $40 million worth that's in the queue, right?
Yeah, actually, it's quite a bit more than that.
Probably double that, yeah.
But I, I would just offer that, a couple of things. One, some of the early projects that focused on this option were very high-magnitude projects, very, very dense. So, their, their requirement for detention was very expensive because they were putting it underground. And, you know, the argument there is an underground system is challenging to maintain, and it's challenging for us to make sure it's working. So, you know, and that will depend on location too, and, and so, that creates an option. The other component, though, is that, you know, as we put more and more of these massive systems and pipes in, like we showed you some pictures of, that creates storage in your network too. But at the same time, it's also conveying stuff. The, the other aspect of detaining near the streams is when all those gates are closed, and then that five-inch rain comes. You have some, I planned larger ponding areas to store some of that, but you know, as we've seen many years along what I call the Walmart ditch, which is the old Blue River Channel, the water starts, that's why the newer stores, that the retail stores are built so high because the water can go all the way to Hobby Lobby when the gates are closed, and the pumping systems can't keep up with them. So, having some storage to help with that would be better, and you can get it in little chunks. Or you could try to pool some of that to maybe get in some bigger projects that will, you'll get more bang for the buck and, and maybe less obtrusive to, to different aspects. The other thing that's coming is going to be water quality. And the water quality efforts is the feds are starting at $200,000 and above. Then, they went to $150,000, then they went to $100,000, now they're talking about going to $75,000, and they'll be here to $50,000 before law. And those contribute to help water quality as well, so as they put stuff into the streams and the, and the rivers. So, just some thoughts.
The other thing I'll mention is, so we have one service area, which was that large 4.2 downtown, square mile downtown east and west drainage study. As you know, there's a US 24 gateway study going on that is that corridor. It has some of the same kind of characteristics, and so, we are looking at the feasibility of considering a second service area. We need to go through some technical work first before we would ask for policy on that, but that's something that we're looking at. So, last August, for those that were on the commission at the time, we had kind of a big stormwater briefing. We had three topics in a row. The first one was that criteria we adopted. The second was a discussion on tributary stream and detention basin maintenance. So, I just have a couple of slides just to kind of quickly revisit where that conversation stood. I will tell you, between projects and transitions and other things, we haven't really advanced any of the draft recommendations any further from August. We have kind of been letting them percolate a little bit and, and whatnot, but I just wanted to kind of hit them again as a reminder. So, on tributary stream, some of the issues, you know, they are there for enjoyment. So on tributary stream, some of the issues, you know, they are there for enjoyment and passive use. But you can have stream bank erosion, you can have flooding concerns, debris and fallen timber. And then they are generally, unless it's a parkland, they're considered private property. And there's any number of different opinions that folks may have as to what a clean stream should look like or what should happen. So it can be a little dicier in terms of some of the conversations that we've had on those. The draft recommendations that we floated last August, and we'll be open to continued discussion on, would potentially consider having a timber debris removal policy, something that was a bit of a shared duty, but at least acknowledge that there are some things when you got a big log falling down that might transcend what a single property owner could, you know, perhaps feel that they could do. The encouragement of stream buffers, because the more holistic and more setbacks you have with the natural stream, the more it can self-heal. And quite frankly, the less bothersome a downed tree is if there's, you know, kind of a good distance between you and the creek. We think there are probably some clarifications in terms of easements and maintenance requirements in our code that'll be part of whatever came out of things. And then some of this was just updated mapping and document library. Right now, we kind of have to do a deep dive into Platts and conservation easements and whatnot, sometimes to even figure out what the applicable policy on those is. That discussion of tributary stream maintenance did lead to kind of a side discussion that is probably quite important, is that when we reach a point where we might wish to do a major project, right now, the city's policy is that it's a cost-share benefit district at a 50-50 ratio. That 50% private contribution is pretty much a blockage to many projects. We do not yet have a project that has a neighborhood behind it that's saying, hey, we would do this but for that cost share. But probably when one came forward, we would have a discussion with you all as to whether that 50-50 cost share is what the city wanted to continue. We've had some feedback that I think you all might be receptive to reconsidering some of those ratios, but we haven't fleshed that out into a specific proposal. Detention basin maintenance, we have lots of detention basins. We have over 100. Most of those are considered private. Some of those are above ground, some are underground. Some of the common issues is overtime. They get silt in them, they need maintenance, the outlets need to be updated. If they're above ground, they've got to be mowed. Sometimes the aesthetics or woody debris moving in becomes an issue. And again, an awful lot of those are private, but the private owners may not really appreciate what that maintenance burden requires until it kind of comes overdue to do the maintenance, and then it becomes a big burden. So on that, our recommendations were to consider moving towards some form of an inspection program that most cities that have a lot of detention basins do that, just so that things don't get away from you. And then if, in fact, we wanted to consider some public-private partnerships for retrofit, like a one-time retrofit assistance, just to get people back where they needed to be, continuing to have priority on maintenance and the communications with private property owners. And I think probably for those who were on the commission at the time, I hope this sounds familiar, but if you remembered any other parts of those discussions, please feel free to share with us. Again, we haven't really propelled these any further forward since we talked last. So all of that is on the quantity of water, but we actually have a whole water quality program with the city. And that is really brought about by the Clean Water Act. And the national goal is to protect the physical, biological, and chemical integrity of our streams, lakes, and wetlands. The way that gets operationalized at a city level is we are of a size that we require to have a permit through the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. There's lots of acronyms, but I only put two up there. NPDES stands for National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. That's just kind of the broad permitting program. And MS4 stands for Municipal Storm Sewer System. There's another S in there, I'll think of it here. But basically, it means we don't have combined sewers. Ours, you know, the sewage goes one way, the stormwater goes another. And that's just the lingo for municipal storm sewers regulated under this program. What that program really asks us to do, because we have limited control on what the rain does, but it asks us to have in place six program areas. So a lot of emphasis on public education and public involvement. We do a stormwater forum every year where we can share information. We're doing outreach through schools and residents and with conservation and environmental organizations. A lot of social media, you'll be seeing some. It's Earth Month, you're going to see some posts here coming soon on Facebook. But then it also, we have programs specifically to go out and investigate reports of dumping or illicit discharges. We do some active inspection of our program. A fairly large chunk of our water quality program is aimed at development. So both during construction, all the silt fence and erosion sediment controls that you might think of, plus the requirement to have permanent type systems in place that help reduce pollutants is a part of our requirement that we pass on to the development process. And then the last is good housekeeping. Basically, we got to walk the walk. So it's looking more at our own facilities, our own training, our own handling of chemicals. Yes, Mr.?
One thing I noticed, I live in the center of town, is, and it kind of really bugs me, is a lot of, particularly rentals that are owned by people who don't put a lot of money into their rentals, is raking all their leaves into the street, you know, instead of picking them up, which I would think then go down into the storm drill, you know, and sort of clog things up. Is that an issue, or is that not no big deal?
It is an issue.
So should we maybe have code look at that, or?
Well, we already received those complaints, and actually, they come to the stormwater program in Public Works. Our focus is primarily on education, so we have door hangers. If we get, you know, if we get kind of reports in the neighborhood, we'll go out and, you know, share some information.
But it tends to be year after year, the same people. I mean, sharing information, and they just probably say, okay, and then rake all their leaves into the street the next, you know. Should we do something a little more?
We've explored some, a lot of communities have provided equipment. In addition to street sweepers, they have these big vacs that suck it all up and haul it away. I think that would encourage more sweeping to the street as opposed to people taking care of their own. And, you know, I think there might be some things to do there, but those are, because our crews then, those, all those leaves go down the storm sewer, and then they're out there in the first ice storm trying to pick it all out. So that you're not skating on the street.
Well, I just, you know, I mean, I'm not really blaming the renters because they change every year and they don't know, you know, and I'm not entirely sure that they're the ones doing any raking. But you can notice the same issues. And just a lot of leaves in the street in front of certain places. And I would think that we should maybe put a little teeth into our greetings about, please don't do this again next year.
What about, have we ever considered something like distribute, free distribution of leaf bags? Something like?
Yeah, we haven't, that I'm aware of. Maybe they have talked about it. I mean, that would be something, and whether or not you want to do a fall cleanup, that buying the leaf back would be maybe more efficient because it's a huge truck that will do it, and it'll, like a street sweeper will collect it instead of, you know, if we have a fall cleanup, here's our crews taking a week out of their last, of the end of the season, patching and street maintenance work, having to go pick up leaves, if you did that. Because it, I think you'd have to do something like that in order to get people to do it like they do spring cleanup now.
So, yeah. I have another comment echoing Karen's point about putting some teeth into some of the warnings. I'm aware of a current situation where a homeowner is being very dramatically affected by lack of erosion control in a construction project right now. The developer has been issued four citations that I'm aware of by the city, but still has not made any changes to his practices. And, you know, it's becoming extremely frustrating for the homeowner. So I would just like to encourage, you know, appropriate follow-up. I don't know if there is an escalating scale of citations. You know, is it $100 the first time, and then $500 the next, and $1,000 afterwards? You know, how are, we might need to go to look into something that does have more of a punitive value for some of these problems.
I appreciate all this feedback. We do have an escalating scale, and without going into any particular neighborhood details, at any given time, there are different cases that are at different spots on that. But certainly welcome any continued conversation about your observations of how successful you think we are in getting the compliance that we all want.
Do you coordinate with city code on these things? Or are you in charge of just checking on the stormwater, and they do everything else? Like sidewalks, or how does that work?
So we do coordinate with city codes. The way it currently works is that if it's, if it's a violation that kind of would fall under this water quality side, we take the lead on it. But most of your regular yard maintenance-type things remains with risk reduction. And we're communicating quite regularly with risk reduction on who's got lead on different issues.
The county is finishing up their five-year solid waste plan that includes a lot of things like this. And I hope you're in touch with them on what they're going to come up with.
I'll make a note of that. Thank you. Post-construction BMPs is probably an area of technology that's advancing and can be difficult or easy depending on some of the choices that we make. But, and I said, that's a long name for green infrastructure, but green infrastructure is kind of a long name by itself, as is low-impact development. There's a lot of buzzwords, but basically, it's the idea of building in pollutant removal and water management for those frequent storms to kind of help restore ecology and handle chemical and biological pollution. As a practical matter, what are they? They're rain gardens by retention cells. Sometimes they're inline concrete chambers that kind of swirl the water around and get the pollutants to drop out. Extended detention, so when we held a regular stormwater detention basin in the past, the goal was to kind of shave the peak off, but then still get it back out. Extended adds a lower portion feature that would keep water held for 24 to 72 hours, long enough to really get some pollutants to settle out. Right now, we use a manual that basically creates a menu of options. And so there's some flexibility for the development community to pick the one that fits within. That's pretty common. Over time, we'll probably continue to see it shake out, which ones tend to be, tend to work the best or need the most additional refresher. But basically, where that comes is any project that is larger than an acre, or in the case of a subdivision, it's treated as part of a common plan of development larger than an acre, is required to address the permanent features. Now, on infill, we only count the net increase. So if, you know, if a site was 50% covered with impervious surface and they redevelopment, but it's still 50%, then, you know, they don't have an extra requirement. But if they were 75%, then they have to treat for that incremental change. Probably one of our challenges right now is to get a hand on the long-term maintenance and operation, just like with detention basins, as we get more of these water quality features in the ground. There are covenants that require owners to do private maintenance, but like all things, you know, building the infrastructure behind that so that we know how well they're doing and can help people handle their duties before they get out of hand is probably an area of policy work that we have in front of us over the next couple of years. And there is also this coming down. KDHE has actually supported the idea of communities looking at an alternative off-site water quality compliance program. The City of Wichita really spearheaded this in 2015. It's actually built into our permit that if we wanted to implement that, we already have guidelines. But basically, the idea is that some pollutant removal can actually be done far more cost-effectively from agricultural operations. And if you can set something up to where you know that an ag-oriented set of practices is being done on an annual basis that is providing over double the amount of pollutant removal as what an urban practice would, the urban practice could be allowed to pay in towards a fund to make that possible. Again, that was something we discussed back in August, but only to kind of get the idea out there. We really haven't done any more with it. I will say, though, that being right next door to Kansas State University, we have a bit of a leg up. Kansas State University's Biological and Agricultural Engineering Program is actually the one that did all the studies for Wichita, and that's who we've been working with to kind of evaluate that. And the idea is that you do it in the same or nearby watersheds. So this wouldn't be paying for a practice out in western Kansas. It would be for some defined region around Manhattan where you could find willing participants that would be part of some kind of ongoing program. Okay, and then we do floodplains because that's also stormwater. Starting about a year and a half ago, actually, the Public Works Department brought some of the day-to-day administration of floodplain management in. So I do serve as your floodplain administrator. Floodplains lean a bit more to the regulatory permitting side. And floodplain management is intended to be a federal-local partnership. So the federal government provides flood insurance, and they provide the mapping product. And in order for our residents to have access to that flood insurance, we agree to maintain and adopt and enforce regulations that are consistent with the federal requirements. So that's kind of the deal. And over time, there's both carrots and sticks. There's probably fewer carrots and more sticks than there used to be. But there, you know, in theory, we could always just say, no, we don't want to do this anymore. There's quite a few consequences when you do that, but it is intended to be a partnership. We, as a city, adopted higher standards in 2015. That's sometimes a little bit of a challenge on communication because some folks come in used to elsewhere and don't always realize those higher standards. Basically, we require an extra foot above what the state of Kansas minimum is. Or on Wildcat Creek, where we have done more detailed studies, it can even be more than an extra foot. We require they be a foot above the future projected floodplain, which is pretty good change in some locations. We also have a provision, there's a provision in the basic FEMA program that if you have 50% damage to your home from any cause, wind, fire, tornado, flood, that before you can rebuild, you have to elevate your house or do, if it's non-residential structures, do some kind of floodproofing. Fairly substantial requirement, can be quite onerous to meet, but is intended to make sure that, you know, we don't just keep reinvesting in the same flooding problems. That also applies if you want to add on to your house, and you're going to add more than 50% of value to it. Is before you can do that, you have to come through the substantial damage. Our higher standard makes that cumulative. So we're keeping track of smaller increments so that when you hit that 50% threshold, that rule applies. And then we have some other compensatory storage, emergency access rules, some other things that go above and beyond the FEMA minimums. We do public outreach and engagement. We work with the fire department on emergency management and cooperation. And many of the things that we're doing that are voluntary play into a program called the Community Rating System. So that's a point system that FEMA administers. If you go above the minimum and you document and you can show good practices, they can give you credit, and then depending on how much credit you earn, that actually then results into a percentage deduction in people's premium cost. And so we are at a Class VI, which is actually quite good for the state of Kansas, and that results in a 20% discount on flood insurance. And we just had our major audit in November. Every five years, they come and check up on us and make sure that we're doing it, doing what we said we would do, and we did retain our Class VI. So that's a lot. So I'll stop there. If you have any questions for us about projects, programs, major policies, or other thoughts.
Just if you've got a copy of that letter that those engineers sent me on that in lieu of, if we could just relook that, I don't know what the answer is. I'm not an engineer or an expert on it. But, you know, it just seems to me, I like the idea of the in lieu of going into the piping system. But, you know, that's for you guys to figure out.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Well, thank you very much.
Don't see any other questions unless you have one.
No, I just thank you for a very comprehensive briefing. Thank you as well.
Thank you.
Appreciate the work of the stormwater team. They wear other hats besides stormwater. And project design and overview, and when we're shorthanded and other things. So thank you all, appreciate everything you do for us.
Yeah, excellent briefing. And I think anybody that wanders around on Blumont or whatever after it rains notices that maybe the kayaks won't make it anymore. We've made some progress. Okay, the last item tonight is the city manager briefing. So Ron, you can take it from there.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few things that I wanted to go over in your mail folder tonight. I think it's probably linked to the electronic mail folder. There was an update from the Kansas Municipal, Kansas Municipal Utility Association. They have a really good summary on the status of legislation, what they did, did do in the wee hours, and what they may still try to do in a couple of weeks when they come back. But I highlighted some things in that report that may be of interest to you. The one that we submitted some late, resubmitted, was on the government competition component, which interestingly enough, the Senate leadership removed the conference committee representatives that they had assigned previously to the bill they were getting or adding their piece into, but the House rejected it and said, no, we want a new conference committee to relook at, at that issue. And so, right now, that one's not in front of the governor, which she vetoed last time. They've expanded it more, included childcare to make it more difficult to veto, and other components. So, it's one of those things that, and then restaurants also. So, it could, depending on, it's very vague on definitions and, and who's actually going to enforce it and make those determinations, and it involves BODA, which already has a huge backlog. It, it charges the county appraiser to have some kind of application process for it, and it's quite onerous. So, it, it still could come back. Hopefully, not when they reconvene, but it's one that we'll continue to, to be aware of. Jared had a, had a email or a memo in your folder last night on e-scooters. So, if you didn't get a chance to see that one, we are, K-State would like to start the process of replacing the e-scooter company that pulled out, and our program, I think, worked pretty well in creating a process for requests for proposals for folks that want it. There's, there's not as many folks in that business anymore. And so, one of the processes we used was requests for proposals, and K-State would like to have a representative from city manager's office, and we have a city commissioner on that committee. So, if there's a commissioner here that would like to participate on that, you can let Jared know, or you can decide now if somebody wants to volunteer, or if you want to entrust staff and, and K-State staff to do that, that's fine, too.
I'll be happy to be on that. I know a lot about from the first one. So, if you, if you need a commissioner, I'll, I'll volunteer. I said, you know, I worked on the last one. I know a little bit about the scooters, and I've gotten all the positive and negative feedback. So, I think it's very important that if we do this again, we get the right company with the right things in place to take care of some of the problems we had. So, I'll be happy to do it.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I had sent out additional information on AUSA, and I guess, to me, it's important, especially with a lot of the chapter involvement. Some of you got an update on that at the military luncheon here last week. So, there's, there's only $195 difference from two to five, and $175 for two people, $370 for five people. My recommendation would be to sign all five of you up to be, have an AUSA membership. If you're opposed to that, and somebody really doesn't want to do that, then we could have a staff person fill that void. But any, any objection to just getting all five of you memberships?
See, you know I'm going to object to that, Ron, because I always have, because even if it's just $195, I mean, you know, we don't have enough money for the streets. So, there's $195 for the streets, and, and that's lean management. You can just look at everything that's not absolutely essential. And I don't need an AUSA membership. I think I'm a lifetime member anyway, personally, so that's why I don't need it. And, and so it's just, it's just a waste of money.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
I'm sure there's some staffers who would like to be there. Like, you know, poor Riley is a giant component of- Our economic world, and anything we can do to show support in a meaningful way, I think is a good idea.
All right. I appreciate the feedback. If you have other thoughts, you can, you can let me know. Let's see, just a couple of things coming up. There is a little, Little Apple Grape Brigade social this Thursday that several of you have indicated you would participate in. Susan, Peter, and Karen are participating in the League's City Leadership Academy that's down at the Hilton Conference Room starting this Friday. And then there's Established Business Leaders Luncheon Learn at the Zoo next Wednesday, at the mayor's speaking at, as well as Jake Wassenberg from Chamber Board Chair. Susan, in addition to the mayor, is planning to attend that one. No city-county-county meeting-
I'm going to that, too. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. No city-county-county meeting next Thursday. There's a little something else going on in this room.
Imagine that. I think we should have that right in the middle.
All right, and then Intergovernmental Luncheon is April 22nd, and I had, I think there's, that would be, I don't know all the information, but the, K-State's been working with Nebraska and Missouri on some really unique data gathering for the whole state, and they're planning to present that. So, it might be something that I think you'd be very interested in.
Good.
Interested in attending. More to come when they puts that out. And then, planning chart-wise?
Can I ask a question before?
Sure.
What happened with LAVTR this year? Anything?
It's dead. I mean, well, it's killed in the current.
It's gone.
The governor hasn't signed it, but both the House and the Senate passed pretty overwhelmingly to eliminate LAVTR.
Statutorily, or?
Statutorily.
Oh, okay.
They're, they're, they, in the budget they passed, there is money for the first time, though, in the city-county revenue sharing.
Okay.
So, which is, hasn't been funded for a long time either. So, we'll wait and see. I, I don't know what those numbers are. Haven't seen a copy of that budget. We don't know what impact that'll be. Typically, that's been a population-based number, so we, depending on what the-
And, and so, what did they, did they do anything to property taxes? They were, they had all kinds of-
They had a, that-
Miscellaneous-
Provides a good, good summary, but they're, they restructured the tax bill.
Okay, yeah. I know they did this, so they have-
But they lowered property tax on the school districts, the levy from 20 to 19, I think, or maybe it's a fraction.
It's 19 and a half.
Yeah.
It's not significant, I don't think.
So, but I, I don't think they did the, I mean, they haven't done anything more. There was a bill that was looking at if you have a TIF district, if you have-
Yeah.
Have some kind of tax control component, community development districts, transportation development districts, all those things that dealt with, with sales tax and some with property taxes. You had to deduct that amount off of your revenue neutral rate.
Yeah.
Which is just insane.
It was pretty scary there for a while.
Yeah. So, I haven't seen that move anywhere. It's not, my, as my understanding, it's not in the current tax bill. I haven't seen, the League hasn't come out with their version of what's in and what's out so far.
Okay.
So, more, more to come on that. Okay.
You see, I was looking here at, you know, the, the thing that Mike Dodson sent out on that, talked about that ad valorem tax.
Yeah.
And he says it abolishes a local ad valorem tax reduction fund and county and city revenue sharing.
Oh, and both of them. So, that wasn't the way I read the-
That's what he sent out on his little dispatch, so that's why.
That's what they were trying to do. The leadership was trying to do.
Maybe why they shouldn't stay in session until three o'clock in the morning.
And so, all they've really done is lowered the, the, the school tax by .5-
And the income taxes.
You know, mils, and, well, yeah, there's some, they exempted social security and some of those things, but they're not helping us at the city level.
No, there's not much city aid there.
And, and the thing is, the overall sale, property tax, if the schools are cut, you know, I mean, people don't see that our section and the county section, and they just see the, the total number.
It did eliminate the sales tax on, the other 2% sales tax on food.
Yeah.
Effective July 1st.
So, we're down to what?
Versus the end of the year.
Are we zero?
Zero, zero sales, state sales tax.
Okay.
Effective July, assuming the governor-
So, maybe we could build with baguettes or something.
General agenda-wise on next Tuesday is, we have a city-initiated rezoning. This is kind of unique, but there's, there's no opposition to it. At least, there hasn't been so far. So, we have some areas in town that were originally zoned for, to accommodate multifamily. However, they were 100% billed out, single-family. So-
So, they want-
Theoretically, somebody could buy five or six of them and demolish them and build apartments there, and they'd be okay with the zoning.
And where is this?
So, several pockets. There's, there's some up in Miller, Miller Ranch. There's some on, on, around Scenic. There's some up in Grand Mir. But again, they're all 100% billed out, single-family, so it's an area that with the, the new zoning classification, it, the staff has recommended we rezon those areas, and we've done communication with all of those neighborhoods to go back to single-family, which is what it is. So-
It should be R1, or?
Yeah, it's, well, the designation is RLA. I don't, I don't have, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's the same as R1. Yeah. So, that's, it's, we initiated it, but we communicated with all those folks that said, we, we gave them the scenario that, you know, somebody could come in and buy five of these houses and build apartments. They said, oh, we don't want that. So, anyway, that's, that's why we mean by the, the city-initiated. There's, there'll be some other ones coming forward where there's a new parkland zoning, much like you did last time, where you've got this designated zoning district for government properties, so they don't go through the municipal facilities process. So-
So, is Grand Mir sort of have a number of zoning levels out there? Because we do have some townhouses and things.
They do. This was, this is a particular little pocket that was, again, zoned to allow for multifamily.
Uh-huh.
But it all was developed, single-family.
They just want protection.
Right. Or just consistent with what it is.
Yeah, protection.
Yeah. And then we've got, understand that we should be receiving the profile. Some of you may have more information on that about me, but we'll put that profile and, and job description out there for the commission and the, the public, and have you authorize that. It is poppy day next week, so bring your dollar.
Bring your dollar.
Consent-wise, we've got those, those second readings on the zonings we had last time. We've got first reading of the Community Support Funds Advisory Board. Again, this is the, that one is still worked through their bylaws and their other amendments, and so those are just some, some changes that they've had in their bylaws for that coming forward. We, you saw the Hudson Avenue first phase that Brian talked about. That's on for award at that meeting. We have a contractual mowing services we do every year. This is a combination of Parks and Rec and Public Works. This is a lot of our areas that we own, a lot of right-of-way and other, some detention ponds we own, that sort of thing for that contract. This change order home, same, like, security trailer. So, this was, we, we were, Homeland Security gave us the portable units that they used at MBAF during the construction, and then we moved them and set them up, some down at the traffic shop, some down out at the joint maintenance facility. And so, we've got finalization of some of the, we set them on a, on a permanent foundation and did all the plumbing and that kind of stuff and contracted all that. So, this is the contract that's working together to finalize that. It's, it's not a very big change order. I don't have it committed to memory. Then there's some other change orders on some ongoing projects, Fremont, Houston, and North Manhattan. We've got several final plats there. Several of those have restricted covenants on it. Those Willis Edition, that's out in Grand Mir. We've got an agreement for renewal of the downtown farmer's market. This Red Dirt Race Management was on last month, and we pulled it. We've had some issue with some not having the certificate of insurance we're still working on. So, hopefully, we'll get that rectified. And then we have the professional services for Anderson. This is for that section that Brian alluded to from Seth Child to Wreath for that rebuild. So, this is essentially the design of that, for that to be bid later this year. And again, anticipated to be something that would start construction in the fall at the earliest. We're needing some assistance with some outside work for, help us with property acquisition on some easements we need for some Public Works projects. This Evergy Street invoice, this is for some of the lights out on the north campus area for that, that particular project on the Edge District. Again, there, it's a price to Evergy for, for that, as well as, I don't know if it involves burying the electrical or not. And then we've got some TEP note sales, both the TEP notes and our GEO bond sale. Those resolutions for you, and then we'll have some Aggieville fees that we talked about last week, bringing that forward. That's just for Aggieville is this action item. And then there's a special event for Manhattan Brewing Company for a Friday alley thing. And then on the 7th of May, general items, comp plan amendment process for the Beyond Tomorrow Downtown Plan adoption, and then some, we'll have first reading of the ordinance for the downtown parking garage. And so, a lot of that based on the discussion we had with you about that last week, and for some more feedback. And then, I'm not sure what the Lee Mill Village item is. Jason, do you need Lee Mill Village financial participation? Is that, we've got a partner out there that's helping us to try and move some vacant lots that we still own, that we bought back from the tax sale and-
The ones on Wreath?
I'm sure they're wanting some, it's not, it's the worst lots that, that didn't sell to others.
Yeah, you may want to brace yourself for that one. And we don't have to do it, but we're working through the strategy. We'll bring you back a scenario that they're willing to develop out the rest of that property, but the low-hanging fruit out there is not, it, it's gone, and we're dealing with some tough sites. So, again, we'll look at it from a cost-benefit analysis. You can analyze it and look and see if that's what you want to do, but there'd be an additional six duplexes that'll basically finish out what's remaining.
Okay. And then there's that second reading of the ordinance, and the bylaws, and that initiated rezoning. Pardon?
What are the bylaws?
The bylaws are for the Community Support Fund Advisory Board. Jared, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah. So, when we adopted or established the Community Support Funds Advisory Board last year, we never adopted their bylaws because we were going through the bylaw purpose evaluation with the city commission for all of our boards and committees. So, we wanted them to adopt their bylaws in the same template that all the other boards did, and they haven't met since last November. So, now they've, we met in April, and they approved their bylaws. The ordinance change is literally changing of the section numbers, because we're putting all of the boards and committees now into Chapter Two. So, legal wanted to move some numbers around to give us flexibility to do that. The ordinance establishing the board is not changing at all. It's just numbering. So, first reading will be the ordinance change. Second reading in May will approve the second reading and the bylaws of the board.
And then what, what is, what is 2B bylaws?
So, that's the, I think, I think it's just a duplication. It's the, it, it means, it's 2A and 2B are both the Community Support Funds Advisory Board bylaws.
Are you covering the May meeting?
Yes.
Yeah. So, on the May meeting, you'll approve second reading, and you'll approve the bylaws.
And then, since we're talking about an advisory board, you want to, Brenda said that we're getting ready to start the new software for board members.
Oh, yeah. We're utilizing, we're replacing a very antiquated system that was tracking our boards and committee membership before, and you all probably are aware of how hard it is to just look up who's applied, and it's kind of difficult to apply if you're an interested citizen. So, we're, we're utilizing a new online system, and we've just launched a new interest form. So, now, when you go to the website and you want to- Now, when you go to the website and you wanna apply for a board, it's, it's through our online portal, and then we'll show you all sometime how you can look to see who's applied. Should be a lot easier for you, instead of looking through that kinda weird PDF that we have to print out every, uh, time someone applies. Be a lot easier.
Yeah, does that new process, uh, I guess focus on the board, so it's not the same questions for each one? Were we able to do that?
Yep, so we can customize the application for each board, and we've worked with the staff liaisons to, to do that customization. Um, a- and then, if you recall, well, some, uh, John and Wyn may recall, but when we, uh, created the new Boards and Committees Resolution, that kinda governs how we do applications, now we open applications ninety days out from when the terms are expiring, so people can apply for those specific boards that have openings. 'Cause in the past, it was just like, people would apply, and they would select like five boards, but there'd be no openings coming, so then, you know, they'd be kinda disappointed because they couldn't get appointed to anything, so now we're, every ninety days, every quarter, we have a, you know, five to six boards that have terms opening, so we can promote to the public, hey, if you're interested in these boards, you can apply. Yep, but yes, we can customize those applications.
Okay, yeah, I, I was hoping we were gonna do that as part of it, so that people understand, 'cause some of those boards got little specific details, you need certain criterion, and, and people overlooked that in the past, and then you, you try to appoint them and figure out they weren't qualified, so. It'll make it easier for those of you that get to do this the next couple of years. So appreciate the work on that, I know that's taken a while.
Yeah, our clerk's office has worked really hard, Brendan and Chelsea, to get that program up and running, so it should be really beneficial.
And then, uh, anticipate having the law board taking action on the request for the license plate readers, or maybe you already have?
It'll be on the, yeah.
Okay, and then, assuming that comes, that request will come here for us to have proven agreement. We've been working on agreement, uh, with, with them to allow for them to place, uh, cameras on our poles or in our right of way on a different pole, so that's what that agreement covers.
Ron, can I?
Yes.
Sorry, can I ask you to go back up to the sixteenth? Um, I noticed that one of the, um, restrictive covenants is listed as being quasi judicial, where the other ones are not. Um, it's number five B, the final plats.
Either you know the answer to that?
Maybe, that's correct.
Okay.
We use the list function, and usually our department heads or, or others are submitting items to the planning chart, and then we formalize them when we get closer to the meeting, so what could have happened is someone was filling out, hey, I'm putting this item on there, and they selected quasi judicial, so I can't imagine. I think that might have, could have been a mistake. We'll let you know though, that, uh, when the packet goes out, if it is quasi judicial, you can prepare.
All right, so, uh, work sessions then, uh, coming up, uh, at the end of the month. On the twenty-third is the Move MHK Comprehensive Parks and Rec Master Plan Presentation.
I, uh, this is to me, uh, really significant discussion, should be, because we need to talk about what direction Parks and Rec is gonna take, whether we're going to really stress healthy communities, or being, um, you know, out there for all, all leveling teams and the, all the very, various groups that we want to come in to, you know, and so I'm wondering, I, I mean, I'd really like Susan to be there for that. And would there be any problem with just switching that till the thirtieth, where we don't have, it's the fifth Tuesday? Um, I just think everybody, this is so important, and we, we heard tonight concerned that some of the money from engineering's going to Park and Recs, and how much should we be spending on Park and Recs? And where should we be directing those dollars? And, um, I really hope this can be a comprehensive discussion, not just a, oh, we kinda like this, and maybe you should do that. Is that reasonable?
We'll have to check with Park and Rec, there are multiple consultants involved.
Okay.
And travel has probably been already arranged.
Okay, well, if it won't work, it won't work, that's.
So keep in mind, this is, this is a work, this is the first work session where you all get to provide feedback.
I know, I know.
And there'll be several more, 'cause I, I don't think we're wrapping it up till summer, are we?
I think, you know, I, I think we need to have a philosophical discussion on where, where we see, because if, if, you know, we all say, well, we wanna, you know, we don't wanna build a skate park or something like that, and then we decide we do, I mean, that's just what I'm saying. If, if there's, if it's complicated, I would, you know, but I do think all five commissioners should, should weigh in on this one.
For sure, and Susan.
Can Susan zoom in on it?
I'm gonna be in Cuba.
Yep, won't work.
Susan, you'll speak Spanish?
Yeah.
We can easily meet with Susan upon her return, and Erin, and, and give her a session, so she can provide her feedback, and she also has the opportunity to watch.
Just check and see if that, you know.
Yeah, we will.
Sometimes it doesn't make that much difference if we do it one week or the next week.
Yeah, and I think the park board's actually gonna get the same presentation within the next couple of weeks as well, so there might be an opportunity to, you know, to pay attention and tune in to what they're doing.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, and then, uh.
Thank you, guys.
I don't know, there, there are some lingering items, I don't know if they're ready yet, Jason can speak to those, uh, uh, next time.
Well, I just, you know, I really feel like, um, we've had a lot of presentations in the last three months. For example, the cemetery board, and I'm never quite sure whether we've said, go for it, go build your building, or whether we've just said, uh huh, that's interesting. Um, I just, I feel we're not getting to a point of direction with, with some of these reports, you know what I'm saying? Um, more, we're just kind of a sounding board, and we say, and, and often, I don't know if the people I talk to are slower or what, but many times, um, the comments come to me after, and I think those are very reasonable points of view, but I didn't have those Tuesday night, so I could speak up with them. So I'd like to see us have more discussion, more conversation, more kind of throwing things out and seeing, you know, where they land. And you'll be gone, so you don't care.
I care, no, I, I, I understand.
You care.
I think the cemetery is a good topic, and, and it can come up in this venue. I mean, we, we were under the impression that we needed to put together an RFP, so we can get a team assembled, so we can deliver more accurate estimates on what the improvements will actually be.
And I think that's what we told you.
Yep. Yep, and, and, but again, this venue is a good one, just to check in on that topic, see where we're at. Um, even with the, the Sexton House and the, um, shops there along Sunset, you know, just, is there a plan? Well, when we talked about those two properties, it's really a lot of flexibility back to the commission, and legal has laid out a couple of options on the Sexton House. If there's direction now, or at any point really, we wanna get into those topics, we can. We can wait for the RFP to come back, and we can get into that design and address your, any issues associated with those two properties. I think we're all, I mean, we're hearing that there might be a movement to get those properties, at least the Sexton Home, on the state register. That's gonna be something you all will have to consider as well as the owner. Um, they have to come to you and ask for that type of permission. So, uh, I, I could see you entertaining that subject matter fairly quick and soon. Um, but again, w- we're kinda waiting on outside parties to take some action before you all would consider that.
I, that's good, but I'd also like us to look at some ways we can be energy efficient with that house out on, or building out on Sunrise Cemetery.
Absolutely.
I mean, you know, are we gonna do some geothermal there? 'Cause that's sitting at the top of the hill, and it's gonna be cold.
Yep, internally.
Four or five months, yeah, you know, are we put, we could put some, some solar on the roof, we could do, you know. So is that part of the RFP?
It is.
Or do they have to tell you, okay?
Nope, internally, we've had that same conversation. We know those things are gonna have to be considered and brought back to you all, and see where you want us to go.
Okay.
But on the, on the periphery, we totally heard that from you last time, and heard, and really didn't hear anything different from the commission, so that RFP will absolutely address that.
All right, well, several more there, housing policy discussion, hope to have something ready for you to review by the twenty-eighth of May.
Are we going to, um, are we gonna have a rating system by then?
The housing, you know.
Policy, policy provisions?
Way to grade, because.
I don't know what, sure, what you're working.
It feels, it feels like we really need to have a better way of, of judging and grading these pre- presentations that come to us. And so, will that be there, or is this just a discussion?
It'll be a continued discussion. We're, again, targeting that policy relative to housing. There's geographic pieces to it, there are specific tools, and some of those apply in certain areas of the community, and some of those may not work as well in others, and I, we're obviously trying to drive this thing. IRBs were our last discussion, we looked at a geographic approach there, but that's really targeted more towards multifamily. Uh, workforce housing, you, you've had some proposals from developers, we've seen those as well. We've got RHIDs, there's some other tools out there that we might be able to stack on each other if we want multi-use type of properties, where we're not just talking about housing, especially as we get into downtown and around our Aggieville area, where we would like to promote even more investment in our community. So there might be ways to, to layer housing in with economic development in certain areas, and then there might be areas where you're just very interested in, you know, a housing component, which would be, you know, maybe your subdivisions, uh, as they grow, and what options do developers have to leverage tools to deliver a product you desire in those areas. So it's multifaceted, multi-geographical, in addition to the variety of tools that we can lay out there for developers to take advantage of. I do think the comment made by the developer last week was accurate. You get programs out there, you are going to generate interest. So being very strategic with that programming is where we wanna be. Uh, we really don't wanna step into this and, and really mess up. We'd really like to be confident that that is the product right there, that's what we want, because I do think you put these tools together, people will find a way to use them and leverage what it is you've put in place. If they're very broad, and they apply everywhere, you're gonna, you're gonna have that kinda result.
Yeah, I, I do think your point, though, uh, historically, taking, use our economic development return on investment.
Yeah, we had, you know, we had a chart, and it was, but, you know, 'cause every eco-devo thing wasn't the same, and some had better wages, and some had more training, you know, there were different things. And I do think we can put together a schematic that will give us a little guidance.
The problem is, is that each of those, we did have one that fit everybody. Now, not everybody fit it, but there was an opportunity where there's gonna be multiples, because there's different categories that the, the state has, that, and that's where we have to decide, you know, how much, how active do you wanna be in each of these, these pots?
Jason, one of the things that I would like to ask you to bring to staff is, um, opportunities for mixed use development in some areas of town, and particularly, I'm thinking about, um, small grocery stores, not huge Hy-Vee's and Dillons, but a small community shop like Yee's, like the Asian Market, that perhaps could go into a space in Northview. Or, you know, there's that property, I don't know who owns it, but the one where there had been a furniture store or outdoor pottery place, um, that relocated over to the Triangle. Um, to me, that would be an ideal location for a small, not a Dollar General, but, you know, a place where people can get good food, fresh food. Um, and I think there are some other opportunities for that in different locations around town. So I would just like to have that, you know, at least be noted in a policy, that we would consider zoning changes to allow something like that.
Yeah, I think we focus on, on a little bit more of a broader, um, definition of that. I think targeting something that specific is typically not necessarily where we get, but a broader, like a community, or a neighborhood shopping center, which could include a lot of different uses, um, including housing and commercial and retail. Um, there are nodes within the, the comp plan that highlight those areas, and typically, we see our community development staff work well with developers in those areas, but there are occasions where those things surface, don't necessarily coincide with the comp plan, and we've made exceptions for those in the past. But, yeah, we can, that's kinda where we're headed, Susan, with the, the stacking of the tools, to where we're not just so targeted with one use, we're looking at multiple uses on a parcel, so we can maximize the, the ground floor, the second floor, and all the way up through, you know, three through five on a five-story type of building, and it's not just a hundred percent housing, yep.
Okay, commissioners, you have any thing you need to share?
Do you have here, or is your last?
My last briefing, we have more, uh, meeting on the sixteenth.
Um, I think John and I are gonna be gone May fifte- fourteenth, so I'm, it's still open, but we just may wanna add that on here.
Okay. All right, I'll just make one comment, I'm, um, you know, we had some meetings with RCPD, I think, different members of law board, and they're looking at their, at their budget for next year, so that's gonna be a, a challenge for us also, because, uh, I'm not gonna get into the details of that, 'cause they haven't really finalized it, but what you, what you might find interesting is that, uh, one of the problems they've got, they, they've managed to fill the, the hole in the Corrections Department, 'cause they were short a bunch of people, and they've got that fixed. But what's also interesting is the, you know, the Patrol Division, the Investigations have, have done a pretty good job of getting a handle on some of the drug trafficking that was going on. And so the end result is, the average inmate population had been sixty last year, it's now a hundred and twenty. And so that has significant budget impact, and, and they've got an idea which, uh, I'll, I'll give you a detailed briefing on it, they, they owe me some more on it, but what, what they wanna do in Corrections is put in a caseworker and set up a program where they can provide some help to these inmates in the mental health arena, the drug, and stuff like that, and, and transition them so that when they finally do leave the county jail, I mean, his, his plan was that they would have a job interview within twelve hours of leaving, and so.
I know, he's talking about doing cooking, you know, the.
Yep, yep, all, all those things, and he's partnered with K-State, and so I'll get the details on that. He's got a job description, because my thought was, you know, uh, originally I was thinking about, well, maybe we could help out that RCPD budget by using some of this community funds for the co-responders, but I'm thinking now, and he's targeting about seventy thousand for the caseworker, that maybe we could consider doing that, because that would be really great use, and it, as I look at that plan, that looks like a very proactive, long-term thing, 'cause it does, it does no good to lock somebody in the county jail and then just throw them out, and, and, and they're gonna try to, you know, provide them some, some, some help, so that when they get out, they're ready to go. And so I, I was really impressed with, with that part of the briefing, that was a minor part of the budget thing. But, but I know you've always been concerned about the mental health and those things, and, and, and I just thought, well, I think they're on the right track there, so I.
Yeah, I think throwing them back on the street the way they came is not gonna, you know.
So I'll get some, uh, better information on that, maybe when RCPD does their update here, we can ask them to particularly highlight that, so that we all, you know, familiar with where they're going.
We had, we had a thing with K-State Corrections, I mean, the, you know, um, some interns at one point, and I don't know if, if they just didn't go on, working with people in the jail.
Do we know, um, does B ABLE have a program where they, uh, help with transitioning at all?
Yeah, RCPD works with them, but this, this would be a, a caseworker in the jail, working while they're in the jail. So it's a, it's, 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 I think it's a very interesting approach, and I'll get some more details on that. I just wanted the commission to be thinking about, uh, you know, that consideration, because by the time we get in our budget discussions, it'll be too late, 'cause RCPD will already have theirs, so if we're going to use any of that community funds money to assist on that, we need to make the decision quickly. All right, so that's all I have, if, uh, there's nothing else, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Commissioner Adam Jack.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough.
Yes.
Commissioner Opel.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramona.
Yes.
Mayor Butler.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, motion carries five.